Good evening. This is Commissioner Martin Smith, Chair of the Heart Board of Directors. For those of you listening in, welcome to the September 14, 2020, first public hearing on the adoption of the tentative fiscal year 2021 milage rate and the annual budget, which will be followed by the regular board meeting. Both meetings will be conducted virtually. At this time, we'll have a call to order and a pledge of allegiance. So please look at the screens of your devices where we will very soon see an image of the flag displayed. And join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is with us, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. Yes, I love how heartfelt that is, even in our days of virtual meetings. At this time, Ms. Arthur, please take attendance.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Danielle from Heart. Please say here after your name is called. Director Castor?
Here.
Director Harden?
Here. Sorry, too many mute buttons.
Director Hudson?
Here.
Director Kemp? Director Kemp? Director Knight? Director McKlein?
Here.
Director Mechanic?
Here.
Director Miller?
Here.
Director Overman?
Here.
Director Schisler?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here.
Director Vieira?
Here.
Director Williams?
Here.
You do have quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Now, our Heart General Counsel, David Smith, will read into the record the rules for participation in the virtual meeting.
Heart board members, employees, and presenters, first off, thank you for your participation in this virtual meeting. The change of meeting from a location in person at the Heart Administrative Office to a virtual meeting is pursuant to Executive Order Number 20-193, extending Executive Order 20-179 by the Governor of the State of Florida on August 7, 2020, and Section 120.54 of Florida statutes. Due to social distancing, the boardroom and the E-Board Administrative Office is only accessible for personnel facilitating the meeting. Please keep your devices and phones muted when not speaking. Muting the sound and microphone on your devices helps to avoid feedback. You may enable the video slash camera on your devices, but please discontinue all personal conversations for the duration of the meeting. Note that the quality of your video will depend on your Internet connection. Please follow along with a copy of the meeting agenda and materials sent via email. All presentations will be shared on the screen while presented. Roll call will be taken for attendance and voting by Heart staff. Quorum and voting results will be announced. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to have pre-registered with Heart staff to provide comments. General Counsel will read into the record the public comment participation rules at that time. During the meeting, please wait until the Chair asks for comment or questions from committee or board members for each agenda item as the meeting progresses through the agenda. When you want to provide a comment or ask a question, please signal that you want to speak by activating the hand button in the white circle next to the name on your screen. The handle turn blue when activated. Please remember to deactivate it after you've been recognized or no longer wish to speak. The names of raised hands will be called on in order for the Chair to acknowledge. Then the participant may unmute their device and speak. Please speak your name before your comment. Presenters, please note that all presentations will be controlled by Heart staff. Ensure that you state your name, title, and company organization for the record. Please state next slide when needed, and staff will progress through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll open the public hearing on the tentative fiscal year 2021 milage rate and annual budget for Hillsborough Transit Authority. Anyone who may wish to speak this evening has already pre-registered, and staff will announce their names when it's time for public comment. Online, we have made available documents summarizing the tentative milage rate and budget. These documents include the agenda for tonight's public hearing, which I will now outline. We will consider the adoption of the following resolutions. The first one is the adoption, adopting the tentative levying of ad valorem taxes, adopting the tentative fiscal year 2021 milage rate of .5 mils, and providing for an effective date. And the second one is the resolution adopting the tentative fiscal year 2021 annual budget of $150,914,97, and providing for an effective date. Each part of the hearing will be conducted as follows. Heart staff will present the tentative fiscal year 2021 annual budget overview. The board will then open the floor for citizen comments regarding only the tentative milage and/or tentative budget. In order to expedite hearing from everyone who wishes to speak, speaker comments are limited to three minutes. After citizen comments, the board will then take action to make changes if they so desire. Staff will present the resolutions to the board for approval, and the board will move approval of the required resolutions adopting the tentative fiscal year milage rate and the annual budget in that order. So staff will now provide a brief presentation on the tentative fiscal year 2021 annual budget. Ms. Cindy Stiglitz, our Heart interim CFO, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and directors. For the record, Cindy Stiglitz, interim Chief Financial Officer for Heart. And tonight, I will present the FY21 budget of Heart budget for your consideration. Next slide, please. Most of this information was presented to the Finance and Audit Committee back in August, and I know we have a very full agenda following the public hearings, so I'll attempt to be as brief as possible. Next slide, please. You'll hear these numbers read into the record following this presentation. Well, in the essence of time, I'll just skip to the next slide, please. This chart shows the total operating and capital revenues by source and the percent that they represent within the total budget. Compared to FY20, where ad valorem and fares represented about half of our combined budgets and federal grants were about a third, you can see that next year, primarily due to the Federal Cares Act and decreased fares, those percentages have shifted, with almost half of our combined budgets being funded by federal grants. Next slide, please. This chart shows our total operating and capital budgets and how expenses are allocated among the modes and projects. The percentages from this year to FY21 shifted about 5% from bus operations to capital. Paratransit and streetcar percentages are relatively consistent from year to year, being 6% and 2% respectively. Next slide, please. So I'll talk about some of the key revenue drivers for FY21. The transportation sales tax that was approved by voters in November of 18 is not contemplated in this budget at all, primarily due to the pending litigation. To date, Heart has received almost $170 million in sales tax that's still sitting in a restricted account, with the Florida Supreme Court renders its decision. And if Heart is entitled to the collected funds or future collections, we'll come back to you with a budget amendment in FY21. The proposed program of projects for FY, well, for calendar 2021 will be presented to the board in the regular meeting following this budget hearing. The biggest number of our FY21 budget is the award of the FTA Federal Cares Act funding in response to coronavirus, and I'll address that more in the next couple slides. But basically, the Cares Act is about 25% of our revenue budget for '21, and it'll allow us to use about $16 million of our general fund for purposes other than operating expenses. Ad valorem increased 9% or $4.3 million for a total receipt of $52.6 million. And of that amount, we'll use about 9.3% to help fund our capital budget and include the cash matches for grants for FTA and FDOT. And we also anticipate using about, well, dropping about $7 million into fund balance. In FY21, even though we're hoping to restore service to pre-COVID levels and expect ridership to be slightly higher than the FY20 projected levels under current conditions, the projected fares will still be about $2.3 million lower than our FY20 budget. So that is a consideration in budgeting for our revenues in FY21. With the exception of the Special Mobility District funding and the Cares Act, annual state and federal grants that we count on every year are flat to FY20. FY21 will be the last year of the three-year service development grant from FDOT. That's about $890,000 a year for the streetcar that affords us the ability to offer free fares. We're always looking for new revenue sources, and as I mentioned, with FDOT and a private partner, we're adding about $1.5 million to our budget to support a new downtown service in FY21. The alternative fuel refund, fuel tax credit, but it comes in the form of a refund, is from the IRS, and it's based on our CNG consumption. I'm really happy to report that, actually, this was a new revenue source that we researched. We found that we were eligible for a refund all the way retroactive back to '27, and just last week, we actually received a total of $1 million so far in this refund, and we're budgeting to collect about $700,000 in '21. And then lastly, I want to thank Commissioners Smith and Miller and Kemp and Overman for penciling in $50,000 in their tentative budget that was approved last week for Heart. $50,000 going into our operating expenses, and we really appreciate that. Next slide, please. So the Cares Act, Heart was allocated almost $39.9 million from the federal government. This is a reimbursement grant, meaning as we incur and incur expenses and bill FTA for payment, we will accumulate the funds and we will defray the cost of our operating expenses. We can use the funding for all eligible operating expenses like salaries and fuel, utilities, contract supplies, and even if they're not directly related to COVID. So I am anticipating that we will bill this entire amount by the end of FY21. To date, we've collected about $12.5 million of that $39.9 million. So really, what this means for us is that we can use the Cares Act to pay for expenses that would otherwise be paid for without ad valorem. It allows us to shift the use of that ad valorem to capital and to reserves, as I mentioned in the previous slide. It's certainly not a long-term solution or a sustainable revenue source, but it's definitely our short-term salvation, especially as our reserves have continued to steadily decrease. Sorry. So I've presented this graph a few times now, and really just to illustrate year after year how our expenses are growing at a rate of 7% every year. Our revenues are only growing at about 5% per year. And with the exception of '18, which was the year of Mission Max, our expenses exceed our revenues on average by 8% a year. The bottom line is that as our expenses continue to exceed revenues year after year, it has a direct and unsustainable impact on our fund balance. So based on our 90-day reserve policy and an operating budget that I'm presenting of $95 million, we should have $23 million in reserves. But based on our FY21 tentative budget numbers, without either cutting expenses or finding an alternative increased revenue source, Heart would be in the red at the end of next fiscal year. So that's where the Cares Act comes in. Next slide, please. So this graph looks a lot better, and because of the Cares Act, rather than having an operating deficit at the end of the fiscal year and then further tapping into our reserves, we should actually be able to build our reserves by about $8 million this year. In FY21, we'll budget a little over $24 million with the Cares Act, which will allow us to balance the budget using $8 million to fund the deficit and then also continue to build reserves by about $7 million. So by beginning FY21, I'm projecting that our reserves would be restored by almost $15 million, and that exceeds FY14 levels. But as you can see, that trend was unsustainable. Next slide, please. So at the committee meeting last month, several board members did ask whether or not COVID would have any impact on our largest revenue source, which is ad valorem. So at the same time, the State Revenue Estimating Conference released their revised estimates on taxable values. This table represents the difference between January taxable value percentage changes and August percentage changes. So you can see, using the revised estimates, not only will Heart collect less ad valorem per year, but over four years, will collect about $19 million less, starting in FY22. And based on our annual expense increases every year, these projected ad valorem increases of $1.1 to $3.3 million will not be enough to keep pace. So the important takeaway here is that we need to rely on the Cares Act to help us to rebuild the reserves in FY20 and '21 to sustain us as long as possible, or at least until we have an increased renewable revenue source other than ad valorem levy data, half a mil every year. Next slide, please. These are the operating revenues broken out by revenue source and the percentage of the budget they represent. I'll just highlight a few. Whereas ad valorem was budgeted at 58% of the revenues in FY20. In FY21, after transferring to reserves and capital, it represents 38%. Similarly, federal grants, they were budgeted at 15% in FY20, but due to the Cares Act, those revenues now also represent 38% of the operating budget. In FY20, fare box recovery was budgeted at 15% of revenues, and in FY21, fares represent 11% of the budget due to the fare decrease projected of $2.3 million. Local and state contributions each increased by $750,000 to support the Special Mobility District, as well as the $50,000 from the county and the local contribution line. And then all of the other revenues represent about 5% of the budget. Next slide, please. So one of the biggest unknowns in preparing next year's budget was to determine what level of service we would be budgeting to, what would that normal look like. This tentative budget assumes that we will resume or restore service to our pre-COVID levels. While we're currently conducting community outreach on proposed service modifications, if they commence in or around January, we will come back to you with a budget amendment, but those proposed changes are not reflected in these budget numbers. People expenses continue to be the highest percentage of our budget, consistently about 68%. Healthcare is expected to increase by 17% or $1.3 million, totaling almost $9 million next year. Overtime is about 8% of the total employee costs. The FY21 overtime budget of $5.4 million would be flat to what we would have realized this year in FY20 if we were operating under normal conditions. We've budgeted about 1% or $650,000 of our total personnel expenses to make adjustments in non-bargaining employee salaries, as recommended through a compensation study that we conducted this year. But I will say, to help offset that increase, we are not paying out merit, we are not paying out cost of living or bonus increases to non-bargaining employees in FY21. ATU and Teamster step increases, as well as any contract incentives that were ratified as part of their current contracts equate to about $2.4 million of that increase. And then lastly, we're holding our 852 positions flat to FY20. Operational contracts increased 27% or almost $2 million in FY21, aside from the Special Mobility District service and the Flamingo smart card that I call out here on the slide, that Flamingo going live in FY21. Some of the larger items in this category include security services, technology and software, paratransit customer choice program, and fiscilining bus stops. All of those items exceed $1 million every year. Bus parts, liability claims are both expected to increase in FY21. I've included a $500,000 budget for contingency, which is about a half of 1% of our operating expenses, and actually, our policy allows for 2%, so it's a very modest budget contingency. Next slide, please. These are the operating expenses broken out by cost category and the percentage that they represent within the budget. Again, as you can see, salaries, fringes, healthcare, 68% of our budget actually represents 65% of the total budget increase over FY20, which is close to $8 million. And I won't go through each category, but in your packet, you have a breakdown of all of the types of expenses that are included in each of these spending categories. Next slide, please. So on to our capital budget, starting with the revenues. As I mentioned earlier, one of our key capital revenue drivers this year will be the use of ad valorem. In the last five years, we've only used a little over $3 million total from Heart General Funds, but with the Cares Act, it did give us that opportunity to shift our general funds into our underfunded capital program. We have several FTA and FDOT grant, capital grants that require cash match that we have not been able to take advantage of. We finally were able to budget the required match in order to utilize the grant money. We're going to put $5 million into our capital program and build a very small capital reserve for contingencies. And so while in previous years, we've used little or no Heart funding, this year, that will increase to 17% of our capital budget. So unlike operating budgets, capital budgets can roll from year to year depending on the completion of the projects. While the budget is increasing, we did roll over about $30 million in projects and revenues, and we have new funding that represents about $25 million, which is about 45% of that total FY21 budget. Federal grants are approximately $37.4 million or 68% of that budget. And just last month, FTA announced that Heart was awarded $2.74 million for its FY20 Bus and Bus Facilities Grant, application for electric buses. And this is actually the second year in a row that Heart has received this discretionary grant award, and actually, it's the third time that Heart has received this funding since FY16, so it's quite an accomplishment. Next slide, please. So these are capital revenue sources broken down between federal, state, local, and Heart. Again, the biggest shift between FY20 and '21 is the Heart portion of the capital program has increased from 1% to 17%, as I just mentioned. FDOT's share did decrease from 26% to 12%, and that's about a little over $3 million. But really, primarily, it's because we spent the grant down. They were one of the largest funding sources for our Flamingo program, which is, as I said, going live, so that capital funding has been expended. Discretionary grants from the FTA has increased from 4% to 23% or almost $7 million. And again, that's due to that FY19 and FY20 Bus and Bus Facilities grant. And the FTA formula funding, dollar-wise, is fairly flat to FY21, but the percent influence in the overall budget is a little bit less. It's about 10% less than it is in FY20. The local share in the mobility fees, they come from, well, they are mobility fees that come from the city and the county. And then the other portion of that this year, which increased our local share by about $1.37 million, is that match that's being provided by TECO for the FY20 electric bus grant. So our capital revenues have increased pretty significantly. Our current estimated state of the repair backlog is almost double the amount of the available revenues. Replacement or overhaul of buses, vans, facilities, equipment, non-revenue vehicles, bus stops, giving you kind of a breakdown there, that means that they have exceeded their useful life, and that exceeds $100 million. On pages 40 and 41 in your packet, I've given you the list of all of the FY21 proposed capital improvement projects by category. On the very last page of the packet, you'll see that we have over $107 million in unfunded capital needs. Again, most notably, the reconstruction of the heavy maintenance building, which exceeds $50 million, and the replacement of 35 to 40 buses that exceed $20 million. And then lastly, we're budgeting, again, for a small reserve for contingencies, which is about 1% of the budgeted capital expenses. Next slide, please. So this chart shows the capital projects broken down by categories, and they mirror those that are on your list. Again, as I just mentioned, rolling stock and fiscilining needs represent the largest portion, or about 66% of the budget. In the technology category, which is about 11%, 85% or about $5 million of that budget is represented by one project, which is the replacement of the CAD-AVL-ITS system that is beyond its useful life. In the planning and studies categories, the completion of the BRT study, which you'll hear about in the regular board meeting coming up, completion of the AV, or the autonomous vehicle pilot, the TOD pilot, and the CSX feasibility study that the board voted for to undertake, for staff to undertake in last month's board meeting. Next slide, please. So this chart just shows revenues and expenses, the change between FY20 and '21. The FY21 tentative budget is balanced at $55,315,515. It's an increase of about 46% or $17.35 million. Next slide, please. So actually, that concludes my presentation, so at this time, I'll take any questions from the board before I can, I read into the record the tentative milage and the budget.
Thank you. So before we move on to the milage rate, I do see one hand raised. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Stiglitz, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it. The GNC refund that you mentioned, how much was that GNC refund?
We've actually gotten so far two checks. I believe that first... Um, I believe the first one was, um, about six hundred, uh, four, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you broke up, say that again.
We've gotten two, two installments so far. We've gotten one for FY, or for calendar year seventeen and one for calendar year eighteen. The first one was, I believe, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, and the second one was like six hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So it equates to a little over one million dollars, um, up, up to now. We're still waiting on calendar year nineteen, and then, of course, we're in calendar year twenty. Um, so we're looking, uh, again, to, to, uh, be able to collect between nineteen and twenty, um, somewhere about seven hundred thousand dollars, and then, and again, in FY twenty-one, another seven hundred thousand.
Hold up, Madam Chair. Is there, is that indicated in this budget at all, anywhere?
Um, the, the refund that we got, that we've just now gotten, we, it is not part of FY twenty budget. It was a revenue stream that we researched at the beginning of this year. We applied for it in May, and we were very happy and surprised that we were actually qualified to get it, um, and, and the check just rolled in last week. So it's unanticipated unbudgeted revenue that came in, um, just in this quarter. So in next year's budget, we do have seven hundred thousand dollars, um, budgeted for that, for that particular refund.
So that refund would not be in the proposed budget that you're presenting tonight, all right? Is that what you're saying?
There is a seven hundred thousand dollar additional refund over and above what we anticipate collecting for seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. For FY twenty-one, we have seven thousand dollars that you're, that you're approving today, uh, tentatively, seven hundred thousand additional dollars that we will apply for for calendar twenty-one in this budget you're approving tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Oberman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, still trying to get used to this air traffic controller thing I have on my head. Um, uh, Mr. Stiglich, thank you very, very much for your presentation. You've helped us not only see, uh, where our revenues are, are coming from and how critically important our partnership and advocacy to the federal government as well as state, given it's, you know, forty-nine percent of our budget is federal funding and ten percent at the state level. Uh, when we look at what I, I could see as potential, uh, changes to our economy moving forward into twenty-one, um, it is very likely that our citizens are going to need transit in economic downturns. Typically, transit ridership does pick up as people have to, um, park their cars if they can't afford to drive, um, or they choose to use transit as a way of managing their, uh, their personal wealth and, and financial budget. But I think it's critically important that we recognize that in spite of that, we're, we're projecting a downward trend towards our fare box. Um, and ADALM makes up thirty percent of our budget. Um, you know, I took a look at my tax bill the other day, or at least, uh, the proposed tax bill, and realized that the, the, um, half mil that we contribute or dedicate to transit, which is one of the leading indicators of our competitiveness for our economy, uh, when we are weighed and measured as a, uh, booming community, as a place where people want to move to, as a place where businesses are willing to relocate and bring their employees and bring their economy with them, um, we have a half a mil dedicated to it. Uh, the only other ADALM tax that mirrors that or is close to that, um, is the, uh, commitment we've made to our children's board, which is a, a point four five, um, or, and our library, uh, which is at point five. So, uh, transit is critically important, absolutely critically important to the success and the growth of our economy in order for us to be competitive. And it, it's thirty percent of our revenues coming in, support our budget. Um, it is going to be critically important that not only we are successful at advocating at the federal and state level, but that we look at our revenue sources and determine our commitment to our economic success in Hillsborough County. Um, I think it's critically important that we recognize that it's very possible that we see a decline in some of our revenues as it pertains to ADALM if we take a hit to the economy and property values fall as they did in two thousand seven, eight, and nine. Um, I don't see it being as drastic because that economic recession was directly related to the mortgage industry and, uh, lending practices that actually caused a great deal of problems, but we have a significant number of citizens within Hillsborough County that own properties that may find themselves in serious financial distress that will show up next year and in the following years, that could in fact affect property values. So I believe that our work is going to be cut out for us, and if we're unable to address that, we're going to have to continue working very hard to improve our financial, um, footing. Without CARES this year, we would have had to actually seriously cut the benefit in twenty. We would have actually not had enough reserves to operate efficiently, and as we all know, operating dollars are the lifeline of a transit agency. Without sufficient reliable income coming into an agency, we are not going to be successful at becoming and being a competitive economic engine in the state of Florida as well as the nation. So while I appreciate the presentation, you've given us a real bird's eye view, but also a very clear view of what our finances look like, and recognizing that we can, we can operate without reserves, um, and I, I want to thank our state and federal legislators that have assisted us in helping us, uh, survive this, this process. I'm looking forward to actually addressing how we operate in the future, and I'll stop there.
Thank you, and let me remind everyone to keep your phones on mute, or your computers on mute when you're not speaking. We've got a little feedback there. Um, Director McLean, you're recognized. Director McLean, you are, it was only done when you're ready to say yes.
I, I thank you, Chair. Um, Mr. Stiglich, I want to say thank you for a fantastic briefing. Uh, I want to echo what Commissioner Oberman just stated. Um, I think you gave us a, a very nice picture of the current situation we're in and, of course, some thoughts for the future. Um, I believe most board members here know that I had kind of recommended we relook the millage rate also during the last three financial meetings we did, and I'll do that again. I, I do believe, uh, there is some room. I do believe we see a possible downturn in the future as Commissioner Oberman mentioned and as you projected, Cindy. Um, and so we'd need to relook that, uh, if you can, and so I'll just put that out there. I do want to say thank you, Cindy, and to the Heart staff, as I went through, um, some of your expenses here, um, operating expenses, I noticed, uh, we did add, I'm sorry, um, we did add an increase, uh, the expenses for FY twenty-one for our bus stops, which I think is, is very prominent, so thank you very much for doing that. But once again, I think the millage rate does bear some, um, relooking and, uh, and a conversation going forward. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, and Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Uh, can everyone hear me okay? Good. Um, so I wasn't going to get into this too much, but, um, as we all know, it is abundantly clear, and as has happened for seven or eight years, uh, our expenses have been exceeding our revenue, um, clear as day, and we have been pulled out of the fire by the CARES Act, and thank goodness, uh, that we had the CARES Act dollars because we would be in a world of hurt in the next two years, and we already were facing critical times. We have been, we have a transit system that was in crisis prior to this. Um, as was noted, seventy percent, and this is true transit agencies across the country, seventy percent is operations, so there's not, no getting around that. Uh, thirty percent is capital. Uh, we have been relying, as has been noted, on, uh, ADALM tax revenue. In my time, I think my first year, four years ago, we were getting thirty-two million a year. It's increased now to, uh, forty million a year. But I will tell you that there are only two counties in the state of Florida that run their transit systems on ADALM taxes, us and Pinellas County, and both of us have been incredibly underfunded, but us far more than even Pinellas County because Pinellas County is one-third of our size, and yet they have now got three-quarter mil in there, they can go up to one mil. But the, the mil is not, the, uh, ADALM tax is not what we need, um, to do what we need to do. In other counties around, and I'm talking Miami-Dade, Broward, Orange, Palm Beach, Jacksonville, every county, every, Manatee, Pasco, they use their countywide dollars, which are, come from both their, uh, cities and counties, uh, to fund their transit systems to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars. We don't do that here, but even if we were to increase our ADALM to double it, to one percent, um, we would be getting, um, you know, something like, uh, doubling our income from forty to eighty million. We could get, if we did the sales tax that we had out there, it would be more like a hundred and fifty million a year, so forty compared to a hundred and fifty million. We are desperately short of dollars. We are in crisis and have been. Um, both of these things would have to go to the voters, but the, uh, ADALM would simply be against our, our property taxes, when we really need a broader and a different, uh, form of revenue, and, um, we need two forms of revenue coming from different sources that, um, are, you know, both can balance one another and, uh, be there in different economic circumstances. So I'll just say going forward, I don't think the, any more increase in the ADALM is the way to go. I mean, I, I will totally, in the future, be, um, supporting the sale, uh, a sales tax because I think that that is the only thing that can bring us anywhere near the critical revenue. We would have to be at a, have a good, strong transit system instead of a transit system that is equal to Sheboygan, Wisconsin, the most underfunded transit system in the nation for a metro area this size. We have a legacy of underfunding and I'll, and thank you, um, Ms. Stiglich for your excellent report that makes it so clear year after year, um, that we are caught in this situation. So, uh, I'm, I'm just, um, ready to move this transit agency, and the, the other thing I should let everyone know is while transit agencies across the country, we all know this, it's happened here, um, during COVID times for, uh, many reasons, is being used far less than, um, than it had been prior to COVID. Uh, we have one of the highest, we have retained one of the highest percentages of ridership of any system in the nation, and that's because we are so desperately down to the rock bottom level that we are keeping so many people that have no other, um, uh, you know, that have no other options in there. So we have lost less ridership than any of the other transit systems. Um, it's critically important that we move forward and that we start to look at, um, various revenues and we start to really think, I think, about what we need, um, for the future, and, uh, and I think that will be a, um, another sales tax referendum should, um, the Supreme Court, um, not, uh, allow us to go forward with the, the one that our voters so strongly supported.
Councilman Vera, you're recognized.
Thank you, Miss, there, I appreciate it. You know, it's funny, I was gonna echo, I was gonna state a lot of the comments that, uh, Commissioner Kemp said right now. You know, it's clear that we obviously have a, a math problem, like a lot of local government and public entities have right now. Um, the, the real challenge for us is that we know that our math problem is exacerbated not only by a COVID economy, but by the potential, the still potential loss of up to a hundred and thirty million dollars, I believe the number is, from prospective AFT, all for transportation sales tax revenue, if that tax in fact goes down in Tallahassee in the Florida Supreme Court. Um, but the, the political reality that we have to, uh, make sure to acknowledge that I think Commissioner Kemp spoke to so wisely, is the idea that we can't have a competition in two thousand twenty-two or whatever it'll be, if we do have to go to a replacement sales tax, uh, for, um, any potential AFT laws before the Florida Supreme Court, and God forbid if that happens, by the way, I, I'll...
Councilman Vera, we just lost your audio.
I want to say, God forbid, darn it.
There you go. Um, no, now you're muted. Now you're muted. There you go. And you're close.
What is... Here without audio. Can you see me, hear me?
Yes, you might feel better since you're having, uh, technical troubles if you turn off the video so that, uh, the audio might be stronger. I'm sorry, we're not getting anything. If you, if you turn off your camera, we might, we might be able to hear your audio. And we've lost him, so...
We may be having some problems, Madam Chair, it's stormy.
Okay.
Uh, I wanted to hear it.
Yes, uh, Councilman Vera?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll just end, I mean, uh, since, since I'm having a challenge, just long story short, we want to make sure that we heed Commissioner Kemp's words. We don't want to have a conflict between any sort of revenue change that we want to have with Heart in two thousand twenty-two with a sales tax. If, God forbid, that tax goes down before the Florida Supreme Court, I and I think every elected official on this board will be begging our constituents to, uh, have a replacement tax, so we just have to keep that at the forefront. Thanks, Madam Chair, appreciate it.
And, thank you. Um, I see no other hands, uh, to, uh, ask or comment on the budget. And with that, we will, uh, move to the tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-one millage rate and annual budget overview. Uh, Ms. Stiglich, you're on again.
Thank you, yes, um, I'll just read into the record. This is the first required public hearing on the tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-one millage rate and annual budget as indicated by the trim notices previously mailed to all taxpayers in Hillsborough County, City of Tampa, and City of Temple Terrace. The tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-one millage rate of point five mils is the same as the adopted fiscal year twenty twenty millage rate of point five mils. The tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-one millage rate is six point one six percent more than, than the rollback rate of point four seven one zero mils. The tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-one annual budget is one hundred and fifty million, nine hundred fourteen thousand and ninety-seven dollars, which represents an increase of twenty-four point three percent from the adopted fiscal year twenty twenty annual budget. The tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-one annual budget consists of the following components: the tentative operating budget of ninety-five million, six hundred thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars, and the total tentative capital budget of fifty-five million, three hundred thirteen thousand and five hundred and fifteen dollars, for a total tentative annual budget of one hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred fourteen thousand and ninety-seven dollars. The tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-one millage rate and annual budgets were the subject of board and committee meetings conducted through July through August twenty twenty. The tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-one not-to-exceed millage rate of point five mils was set at the July twentieth, twenty twenty-one board meeting and provided to the property appraiser on July twenty-first, twenty twenty, and conform as with state law. Chair?
Thank you. So, do the board members have any comments before we open for public comment? Any questions about the millage or comments? Seeing none, we will proceed to public comment. Um, I know there was, there was one person signed up for public comment. Uh, Ms. Arthur, is that it for the budget hearing?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I believe General Counsel has the rules for public comment participation, if you would allow that to be read.
I would certainly allow that to be read. Miss, uh...
Yes, uh, the Board Counsel, the Board welcomes public comments about any issues and concerns and has made provision... and has made provisions. We'll offer virtual public comment. Will the comments offered virtually, will be afforded equal consideration as if they were offered in person. Anyone wanting to provide public comment for any Hart committee or board meeting should contact Danielle Arthur, Arthur, Board Administrator at arthurd@gohart.org. That is A-R-T-H-U-R-D at G-O-H-A-R-T dot O-R-G, or at 813-955-2426, with your name and phone number for pre-registration. Comments are due by 5:00 PM the day previous to the meeting. Staff will call on speakers by name in the order in which registrations were received. All callers will be muted upon calling and unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by name. Please state your full name, organization slash address if desired. Up to three minutes are allowed to each speaker, and the speaker will be muted once time is up. Staff, please proceed.
All right, our first speaker is Mauricio Rosa.
Ma'am, this is Yolanda Jennings from Hart. The guest speakers did not come on the line before the meeting started, and I've remained on the line and no one has joined.
Thank you. So we will close public comment, and I'll open the floor to...
Hello? Hello?
Hello? Is that a...
Yes, this is Dani Crispom. I, I, I have put my name to speak.
Yes, Dani, this is, Dani, this is Danielle Arthur from Hart. We have been in communication. So this is the public hearing. You wanted to speak at the full board meeting, which will be following this public hearing. There will be another opportunity for public comment at that meeting for you to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is public comment for the budget and milage only. And we have no one else who has signed up and on the line for public comment. So with that, public comment is closed, and I'll open the floor at this time to board discussion, if there's any changes or if anyone wants to make the motion.
Madam Chair, with approval?
I'll second that.
Okay, so state statutes require that we approve the tentative fiscal year 2021 milage rate before we approve the tentative fiscal year 2021 annual budget. Accordingly, we will vote on each resolution separately, and it seems like we might want our CFO to read the resolutions into the record for our first motion to adopt the milage rate.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shall I read the resolutions and you'll take a vote on each respectively, or would you like me to read both at the same time?
Read, read the first, please, that, that we're about to approve the milage rate.
Okay. Resolution R. 2020-09-25, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the tentative levying of ad valorem taxes, adopting the tentative fiscal year 2021 milage rate of .5000, and providing for an effective date.
Great. And so with that, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp and a second by...
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, point of pardon to our procedure, you did it backwards. You should have read the resolution, then you took a motion.
So moved for the resolution.
I'll second that.
Great. And is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Arthur, please take a roll call vote.
This is Danielle Arthur from Hart. Thank you very much. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Director Knight.
Thank you, sir. Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. We'll do the same thing, same procedure for the annual budget. So if Ms. Stiglitz would read that resolution into the record.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution R. 2020-09-26, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the tentative fiscal year 2021 annual budget of $150,914,097, and providing for an effective date.
So moved?
Second. Commissioner Overman?
Thank you, Commissioner Overman. So we've got a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-09-26, the 20, the tentative fiscal year 2021 annual budget, motion to adopt by Commissioner Kemp and second by Commissioner Overman. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Arthur, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. So in compliance with Florida statutes, a public hearing has been held on September 14, 2020, for the purpose of considering the tentative fiscal year 2021 milage rate here to fund the tentative fiscal year 2021 annual budget. This concludes the budget public hearing component of tonight's meeting. The final public hearing is scheduled for Monday, September 28, 2020, at 5:30 PM, and will be conducted virtually. And with that, we are now moving straight into our regular board meeting, and welcome everyone. In a moment, we'll have a little bit of visual aid for our first item on the agenda, and that is to welcome new board member Tyler Hudson. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Tyler Hudson, who has been appointed to the Hart Board of Directors by Tampa Mayor Jane Castor. Mr. Hudson will replace the previous city of Tampa appointee, Kathleen Shanahan, who resigned earlier this summer. He is also being appointed to fill the spot vacated by Ms. Shanahan on the Strategic Planning and External Relations Committee. Mr. Hudson is a partner with the Tampa law firm, Gardner Brewer Martinez Montfort, and practices in the areas of real estate, land use and zoning, and general business counseling. Prior to joining GBMM, Mr. Hudson was an associate at Holland and Knight from 2013 to 2018, where he practiced in both the corporate and real estate transactional groups of the firm's Tampa office. For three years, prior to starting law school, Mr. Hudson was a principal with Hilltop Public Solutions, a public affairs firm in Washington, DC. At Hilltop, he managed integrated government, government relations campaigns for multinational corporations and trade associations in the aviation, pharmaceutical, and reinsurance industries. Additionally, Mr. Hudson advised and worked on several political campaigns in the areas of speech writing, message development, and debate preparation and field organizing. In 2018, Mr. Hudson co-founded All-for-Transportation, the historic citizen-led campaign to fund county transportation improvement. The successful campaign collected over 77,000 citizen petitions, raised over $4 million, and passed with 57% of the vote. Mr. Hudson obtained his BA in Philosophy from the George Washington University and his Law degree from the University of Florida. By the way, that makes two philosophers on this board that I know of, as my MA is in Philosophy as well, so very happy to be welcoming another philosopher. Outside the office, Mr. Hudson devotes time to a range of civic and philanthropic activities. Mr. Hudson and his wife Grace live in historic Tampa Heights with their two children and one yellow lab. So on behalf of the directors and staff of Hart, let me say that we all extend a warm welcome to you, Mr. Hudson. Would you like to say a few words?
Thanks so much, Madam Chair. And I know, I know we've got a lot to do tonight, so I'll keep my remarks short, but it was a pleasure to get to know a lot of you during the campaign. I'm excited for all the work that lies ahead. It's a lot of work, but many hands make for light work, as I said. So I'm really excited to be here and looking forward to getting to know you better in person when, when things get a little bit closer to normal. Thanks.
You're muted, Mariela.
Thank you, yes. So this takes us to item three on the agenda, the approval of the virtual meeting minutes.
Move up for...
To save time, let me suggest that we can approve them all three together with one roll call vote, if that's the desire of the board, the regular Board of Directors' virtual meetings from, from August 3, the procurement manual review workshop minutes from August 7, and the arterial bus rapid transit workshop minutes from August 26.
I'll move approval.
Can you approve all three minutes?
Second. So I have a motion to approve, I'm up in a second, from Director Mechanic. Is there any discussion on the, on those minutes?
Chair Smith, I'd like to bring to your attention that apparently we've lost our YouTube feed, so the public is unable to watch this meeting at the moment. It may have been restored, but apparently the storm is causing some interference. Is there anyone at staff can verify that they, we are still online and still available to be seen by the public?
I'll tell you what, while staff is verifying that, I think we can move approval of the minutes.
Thank you.
So Ms. Arthur, if you'll take the roll call vote while staff verifies the status of our YouTube feed.
I was, I was actually just, I was actually just informed that we are back live again. People may have to refresh their screens, but we should be back live again through YouTube. And then I will move on to the voting. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director Knight? Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director Knight? Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Knight?
The motion passes unanimously, thank you.
All right. At this point, we have public comment, and I know we have, I know we have one person on the line, Ms. Crystal Stomo, who was on the line to comment. You are recognized.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Dani Crispom, and I work for Hart, I'm an operator, bus operator, and I'm ATU 1593 organizer. Good evening, board members, and thank you for allowing me the time to speak. Before I get started, I would like to ask for additional two minutes, please.
I'm sorry, we have three minutes per speaker. Please proceed.
Thank you for considering. The purpose of me coming to the board is to follow up on my email that I sent and to explain it. I am coming to the board because I know about the current litigation of the sales tax, and I do not want any air, any, to air any dirty laundry to the public to harm the process. Hart has become a very toxic workplace and hostile for most of the workforce. I personally have been placed in a hostile, racially uncomfortable environment by management. Crystal Hartley, Ruthi Reyes, Ivan Maldonado, Gregory Bracken, Brian Abrams, Sester Simmons, and Kimby Green. They have formed what most would consider a workplace gang unit. They have removed checks and balances in right and wrong from the workplace. Since January of 2020, I have not only been fighting domestic violence, but I've been terminated and scheduled for a 30-day suspension just for speaking up in the workplace. Most of my coworkers share the same feeling, but fear retaliation if they speak up. I personally have filed complaints against of the previous mention. To not avail while providing hard evidence and being stonewalled from other requested information, the latest and most recent complaint was when the operation manager, Mr. Brian Abrams, bragged about his white privilege while comparing minorities that were killed. This was very disturbing to most of the employees at Hart, and we felt alone that no one had our backs when we felt threats, invasive discrimination, or inequality. This complaint has gone to Ivan Maldonado, who never responded and proceeded accordingly up to the ladder of management with no response. As a minority, we are deeply saddened that with such a known fact about a manager bragging about his white privilege, he will continue to manage minorities. This acceptable and protactive behavior has led Mr. Abrams to spitting like he's going to change the culture around Hart. He's going to break the union and order unprofessional rank. This behavior is being supported by Miss Crystal Hartley, who was tasked to complete her claim in her...
The order that I tried to get is false. Excuse me. Return it back. We are in receipt of your email, and that is being taken under advisement through the proper channels. So, thank you. Your time is...
I have my hand up, Chair. Go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Commissioner Miller?
You said that it's being taken through proper channels. What proper channels are you talking about?
Internal channels. Would you like to ask...
My minute before, please.
Pardon me?
Internal channels, with regard to...
My minute before, because I would like to finish.
I'm sorry, a public comment, it is three minutes. Commissioner Miller, would you like to ask the interim CEO to address that, or...
Well, some would, because I saw, that's, that's some real hardening allegations she just brought forth concerning a hostile workplace and allegedly discrimination, and you said it's being, being handled through proper channels. I'm just wondering what proper channels we're talking about.
Through, through the channels of the, that Hart has for these kinds of matters. If, if you'd like to bring it forward on a, another agenda to ask for the resolution of this?
We're, we're in public comment, I'll, I'll, I'll bring it.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Thank you. The next public comment is from Ms. Jones. Is she on the line?
Chair Smith, this is Danielle from Hart. She has actually submitted a written statement instead of being live on the line, so I will go ahead and read that now, if that's okay with you.
Yes.
Okay. So, from Latisha Jones, it was sent to me via email. Quote, "To the Chair, Commissioner Mariella Smith, and the entire Hart Executive Board Members, my name is Latisha Jones, newly-elected President of 1593 Amalgated Transit Union representing Hart bargaining employees. It's an honor and a privilege to serve a group of dedicated and professional operators, customer service, and maintenance employees. We are working hard with Mrs. Caroline House Stewart and her team with building a joint health and safe workplace. We are working together to make Hart one of the best workplaces in Tampa. We believe that we are one striving to keep the city moving. Dr. King left these profound words of encouragement to us. If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl, but do whatever you, but whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward. This is our purpose as we work together to keep Hart moving forward. Latisha Jones, ATU 1593 President." That is the end of her comment. Would you like for me to continue with reading the other comment that I had received?
Yes, please.
Thank you. The second comment that I received was via email again, also, and it was from a Caroline Hand. Quote, "To whom it may concern, as a downtown resident, I enjoy taking the trolley to Ebor City. This past Friday, September 11, 2020, will be the last time my family or myself will ride the trolley. We boarded the trolley in Central Ebor around 9:15 PM after having dinner with family. There were two people sitting on the trolley without a mask. After realizing that the driver wasn't even going to ask them to wear a mask, I asked them to put on a mask. Their response was quite obnoxious, and there are signs on the trolley stating that masks are required. After they exited the trolley at Sparkman's Wharf, I asked the driver why they didn't have to wear a mask when your signs say otherwise. He said, 'I have my own opinion on wearing a mask, and I can't make people wear one.' Then two more individuals got on without wearing a mask, and again I mentioned it to the driver. He said he would have a supervisor meet the trolley. An elderly man who was also riding the trolley thanked me for speaking up and said he was afraid to say anything. The supervisor arrived and informed me that no one has to wear a mask on Hart, and the police don't do anything either. He then suggested that if I was uncomfortable, I should have exited the trolley. Please explain to me why you post that masks are required. Also, if I am following the posted rules, why should I be the one to get off the trolley? Maybe you should have, maybe you should be honest with people and ask them to ride at their own risk. As a local high school teacher, I am trying to avoid getting myself and/or my students sick. I really don't appreciate being put in a position to potentially spread the virus to my family or students. Please reconsider your stance on mask-wearing or inform your employees. Sincerely, Caroline Hand." That concludes all the written comments that I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I think there's been several issues, right, that we will be looking into for further action, so I appreciate all the comments that have come in from the public. You help us be a better agency every time you provide input. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I'll move approval. Is there a second to the consent agenda?
I'll second that. This is Commissioner Overman.
All right.
Also, the YouTube is down again.
All right. Is there any discussion for the consent agenda? Commissioner Overman, you had your hand up. Is that from before?
I don't think I did, but I'll take it down. Thank you.
All right. Um...
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website at www webex.com.
That's a little reminder to put your phones on mute. And if there's no discussion about the consent agenda, staff take a roll call vote.
Thank you. This is Danielle from Hart. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight? Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Viero?
Yes, sorry about that. I had a hard time. Yes.
Thank you. Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Knight? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Overman, I've just advised the feed is streaming again.
It's fine. Thank you.
It may be off and on with the storm, but we're doing, we're doing the best we can. Okay. Now we move into the action items on number six. The first action item, 6A, is to award a contract for legislative consulting services. And we will start with receiving the presentations from the top three proposers for this contract. The presenters will have ten minutes for presentation, and they will hear a warning bell when they have one minute left. Hopefully, the board members have reviewed the presentations in our package, so we can keep the Q and A brief as possible, and as we have an awful lot still to go tonight. John Edmondson, Director of Procurement and Contracts, will facilitate this process today. Mr. Edmondson, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Edmondson, Director of Procurement and Contracts Administration for Hart. As everyone is aware, we've gone through a solicitation process and engaged our board in an ad hoc committee to review proposals for firms interested in providing general legislative and consulting services. The top three firms are here tonight to present their information to the board, allow for the board members to ask some questions, and then at the, at the conclusion of that, the board, we will then turn, ask the board to allow us to enter into negotiations with the board's preferred vendor. The, I do believe that all firms are online, so without any further ado, we're going to go ahead and get into it. The first firm that's going to be speaking tonight is representatives from Becker and Poliakoff. I would ask that each member of the presenting team introduce yourself each time you need to speak, since we are in a virtual environment, we do need to record who the individual speakers are, and with that, I will allow Becker and Poliakoff to take the stage.
Thank you. And good evening.
Are you freezing up?
Could you hear me?
Can you hear me?
We hear you. Yes, ma'am. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you so much. My name is Yolanda Cass Jackson, and I am a shareholder at Becker, and I have my team with me here. Next slide. We are a law, a lobbying firm founded in 1973, and we have comprised of about one-hundred-and-thirty lawyers, fifteen offices, one of them there in Tampa. We want to make sure that we also mention Caesar Hernandez, who's our local partner and substance of transportation expert. Next slide. In addition to being a bipartisan, very diverse team, we have a local, state, and federal lobbying team that has worked together. I am the lead lobbyist in Tallahassee, lobbying for some, over twenty years. Omar Franco, who you'll hear from, heads our DC office, and Caesar Hernandez, as I mentioned, is our local expert. Next slide. We are ready to hit the ground running, and I am going to turn it over at this time to Caesar Hernandez. Caesar?
Yes. Good evening, board members. Yolanda, thank you so much for that introduction. I've been fortunate enough to have become here in Tampa Bay since my time at US Department of Public Affairs, and then working at Camp City Hall for Councilwoman Lisa Montalicon, and ultimately having the opportunity and being fortunate enough to screw up Hart's internal relations since now in 2016 and 2017. And during my tenure, I was fortunate enough that we were very successful during coordinated efforts at bringing over six million dollars worth of resources into the agency, developing public-private partnerships and transportation network initiatives such as a partnership with Tesla, and including private dollars, almost about three-hundred thousand in private dollars and facilitating P3s. And we will be ready to begin to coordinate a legislative and policy objectives with the government relations staff currently at Hart, looking towards updating Hart's facilities, looking towards the future of transportation and mobility with P3s, also working with regional special districts and other regional entities and authorities on coordinating a legislative agenda that would represent Tampa Bay as a whole, also facilitating interactions with supplementing technologies to be able to provide the services needed to the citizenry in Tampa Bay regardless of grant grants or existing grant initiatives, also with a mind in reducing carbon emissions and keeping really in mind the ability and the eventual transition of a fully electric fleet. These are some of the footprints and the precursors of things that we're going to be looking to achieve, and I am a resident of Tampa Bay. I truly believe that transportation is freedom, and when I began to look at a team to properly coordinate, the reason why I approached my colleagues at Becker is their ability to work on both sides of the aisle and their really in-depth knowledge, not just in Tallahassee, but also with the legislative process in DC. So, with that, I would like to kick it back off to my colleague, Yolanda, and if you can please go to the next slide. Yolanda, you're on mute.
We work very, very hard and never stop working and elevating your priorities as a client to the highest level. Next slide. Just want to give you a few examples. I'm going to pick one for time's sake, and that's one that we're very proud of. We were able to increase twenty million dollars for our client, twenty extra million dollars to a time where we had a one-billion-dollar cut in revenue, and so we were able to increase recurring funds for Florida historically black colleges, working with legislative leaders, including Governor DeSantis. Next slide. So, we also, in addition to elevating your priorities, we know how to get to the right people. We've worked with Governor DeSantis's office, we've worked with legislative leadership on both sides of the aisle, and we were able to bring back historic, historic funding. And we take that knowledge and, and ability to get to right people through, through policy and budget, through FDOT and other entities within the state. Next slide. We make sure that we go beyond, beyond, above and beyond. We try to make sure that we connect you as our client to not only lobbying strategies, but other thought leaders and thought leaders' opportunities. We testify before elected officials. We have you to testify before other elected bodies. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Omar, who's going to tell you more about what we do at the federal level. Omar?
So, my name is Omar Franco. I was the former Chief of Staff to Congressman Mario Diaz-Balart. So, nine years ago, when Yolanda and the late Alan Becker asked me to start the Becker Office, I said only under one condition. Next slide, please. I needed to join my friend and my colleague Clarence Williams. He and I started the office, and together we've grown the practice. We now represent five Florida counties, about a dozen municipalities, and we have a huge transportation portfolio. We represent both at the public level and at the private level, but we saw that we needed someone else to kind of round out our team. So, our next additions have been Alfonso Lopez. Alfonso Lopez was with the firm called Alcalde Antae, and he is now currently the Majority Whip in the Virginia State House, and he is also being considered for the Biden Transition Team. And then rounding out our team, and I'm going to hand it over, is Anthony Bedell, and he can give you a little bit about his background. Next slide.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Anthony Bedell. I recently joined Becker last November. When I left the US Department of Transportation, I was Deputy Assistant Secretary for Congressional and Internal Government Affairs for just under three years, and sat on the Secretary Charles senior staff. I think one of the things that we do, and how we like to approach is, as you've heard, a word we use often is elevate, and our approach is quality over quantity, and also, are you meeting with the right decision-makers? Obviously, I have a relationship with FTA. Can it be better? But more critically, do I have a relationship with the Office of the Secretary, the Office of General Counsel, where many good transportation plans go to die? And then, as you're looking at P3 opportunities, the Build America Bureau, where you have the TFILO loan program, that can be a critical piece as you're putting together federal, state, and local and private funding, and also the Office of Management and Budget. The good thing is, we already operate with our current clients, and our places were very comfortable in making sure that you have the right access to the right people. Next slide, please. Very quickly, there are some examples on here of where we've elevated, and most notably the second bullet on the nine million from FTA for car area transit for new buses and rehab of their existing infrastructure. Next slide, please. A lot of what we do again is elevating you to, on a number of these bullets on the screen, but most importantly, infrastructure and transit grants and funding opportunities, thinking outside the box in how you can approach and getting some that you've been successful getting, and then opportunities where you haven't been. Obviously, surface transportation reauthorization has slowed down in Congress, but probably going to extend that another year, so that means that we will have to be doing this again, and it's again elevating you to the right areas. And finally, the build and infra DOT DOT programs are ones that we really can have access to. I sat on the senior review team. I know how the policy career staff rates these, rates these grant applications and how to put together and formulate winning grant applications. Next slide, please. And finally, these are the, the people I had the great honor of working with, and a couple of transit programs that I did work on, most recently with the governor of New York, the New York New Jersey Transit, was the North Porta Bridge, which is critical to the gateway of the transit, not only for passenger rail, but for transit, and they were awarded two-hundred-and-fifty million for engineering. I also worked very closely with the mayor of Los Angeles, LA Metro, on securing one-point-three billion for the Purple Line extension, and across the country, I was able to go out and actually visit these and walk the tubes. I've visited Tampa, I've visited Jacksonville, so I've seen these firsthand and know how the, the relationship in the FTA in particular are very important. Next slide, please.
You, ten minutes are up. Have you, are you about to?
Yes. If you can flip it to Omar, he can wrap up in thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds? Mr.?
Omar Franco, again, thank you so much. We are, like I said, Yolanda said, we're a bipartisan firm. We have three Democrats, three Republicans. We are well positioned for any changes in administration, any changes in Congress. We are one of the most diverse firms in all of Washington. I think that is a huge advantage in that we do get to speak with the caucuses as they become rank-and-file member, because we, you know, we have, we get to talk to them immediately as soon as they hit Congress. We don't represent any transit authority, so we have no conflict, and that will be the end of, thank you again, and please let me know if you, what questions we can answer.
Thank you very much, and thank you for kicking it to ten minutes. I appreciate you could see what a beefy agenda we have tonight. What we're going to do is allow board members to ask questions of each presenter, so if board members have any comments or questions for this particular presenter, you can ask them at this time, or else we'll move to the next one and go. We have, I can assure you, we've all been warned that this was a very full agenda, and we've all done our home full agenda, and we've all done our homework studying the information that was in our package. So, thank you very much. Um, I see no, no hands from board members at this time, so, uh, we will, um, move on to the next presenter. Uh, Mr. Edmondson, you're recognized again to introduce the next team.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, next up is going to be representatives from Holland and Knight. Um, I do believe Lisa Barkovik is online. She's going to go ahead and, um, lead off the discussion. As a reminder, speakers, uh, on behalf of Holland and Knight, please introduce yourself, um, before you begin to speak, so that we can properly record your name for the record. Uh, and for those that are not speaking, please keep your, your phones and devices on mute, um, so that we can avoid some feedback. With that, uh, representative from Holland and Knight, your turn.
Hi, good afternoon. Good evening. I'm Lisa Barkovik, a senior policy advisor at Holland and Knight. I've been with the firm for fifteen years, and prior to that, I start, got my start working in the Florida Congressional delegation, and I worked for a member from, uh, South Florida for five years. I'm actually going to let my colleague Jim Davis, former congressman from the Tampa Bay area, to introduce the H and K team, um, and I'll turn it over for, uh, former Congressman Jim Davis.
Thanks, Lisa. Next slide, please. Uh, the next slide, I'll give you back up on, thank you. That, that slide reflects the team that has been working for you with Lisa. Me tonight also is Kim Case and Governor Bob Martinez from our state practices, as well as our co-counsel Jeff Booth. Holland and Knight has been representing Hart for twenty years. Some of us have been working with Hart a lot longer. We're very pleased and proud to represent Hart, and we'd be pleased and proud to continue to do so, and we're especially pleased with some of the results we've been able to achieve for you that we'll be discussing tonight. And we are very much aware of the substantial pressure you run into to both compete and succeed in getting federal and state grants. Next slide, please. I'd like to add a couple of points before I come back over to Lisa. The first is, one of the main reasons I joined Holland and Knight is because of our deep and broad subject matter expertise. As this slide describes, we are very adept at working with every dimension of the federal government and state government, whether it's the administrative, legislative side, or regulatory side. I'd also like to add that regardless of the outcome of the election, uh, we are very well prepared to continue to represent you, and I think we've demonstrated that in the past. We have several members of Congress, Democrat and Republican, uh, several former administration officials from various Democratic and, uh, Republican, uh, presidential administrations, as well as some very talented congressional administrative staff. And regardless of who wins the presidency and the outcome of who controls Congress, we are very confident we'll be able to continue to provide for you the results that y'all desperately need to provide the service to your constituents. If you go to the next slide, please, I'd like to turn back over to Lisa.
Thanks, Jim. Lisa Barkovik again. So we are defined by our record of success, and our success is based on Hart's success as an agency. And so we are pleased that, um, in the twenty years that we have been representing Hart at the federal level, that we have secured over ninety million in federal. And just in the last twelve months alone, not even twelve months, we've helped secure over seven million in federal grants. Some of that success is due to the team effort, the collaborative effort that you have with the Holland and Knight team and with the Hart staff, which is great to work with. Um, so just a couple of notes to hear too of the past year grants. Two of them are the most competitive bus and bus facility grant, as you heard Cindy talk about in her budget presentation earlier, and that has been heard of to get back-to-back bus and bus facility grants. And this is the third time we've, uh, done this in the last four years. And, um, I'm going to turn this over to Kim real quick to talk about our state legislative practices. But just a quick note about this, in this last round of bus and bus facilities funding for FY20, our firm secured over thirty-six million in grants. We didn't have any conflict with our other transit agencies that we represent nationwide. In fact, we helped, uh, the Jacksonville Transportation Authority also secure a bus and bus facilities grant in this last round too. Kim?
Thanks, Lisa. Board members, I'm Kimberly Kay, senior policy advisor at Holland and Knight, and Governor Martinez and I lead our state advocacy efforts in Tallahassee. And over the past few years, we've worked hard with Hart to further strengthen your relationship with the delegation, as well as other critical decision makers in Florida. As a result of the meetings and policy discussions that we've helped facilitate in both Tallahassee and in the district, you have strong advocates, bipartisan advocates. Senators Cruz and Rifaq, Representatives Beltran, Loto, Driscoll, and Hart have all worked with us. And I'll give you one specific example of those relationships and actions that have led to success. I know we're waiting with Supreme Court decision on the, the tax issue, but in 2019, there was an effort in legislation, uh, by a Miami-Dade legislator that was focusing on a toll agency in South Florida, that the impact, the language would have significantly hampered Hart's ability to utilize the tax revenue on operations. So we quickly mobilized representative of Hart and Driscoll, worked our relationships within the committee and the bill sponsor, got that bill amended and got it amended in the Senate. So when it passed, it did not impact Hart at all. And that's a direct testament of the relationship building and the, the relationships that both Holland and Knight have and Hart has now. With that, the next slide, please.
This is Jim Davis again. Like to make a couple more points. So we are a national practice. Both of us who are with you this evening are part of a public policy and reg- regulation group of over one hundred people. And as this chart refers to, we have substantial experience and expertise, uh, dealing with national issues that we put to work every day for Hart. Uh, I'd like to add that in the ten years I was privileged to represent our community in Congress, Holland and Knight and Jeff Booth represented Hart, and I found that their substantial knowledge of all the details of the administrative level, the regulatory level, the commit- many staff level were invaluable in terms of maximizing support and getting results that y'all desperately need. So we, we put our national expertise and reach towards you all every day. If you could please go to the next slide, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Booth.
Hey, thanks, Jim. This is Jeff Booth with Infostat Strategies, but, but like Tyler, I'm a former Holland and Knight person. I was a partner with Holland and Knight until I left the firm, started my own company about five years ago. If you could go to the map, please. What you see on this map, it illustrates the breadth and depth of our combined transit practices, as Jim referred to. And this includes both lobbying, but also transit policy and project-specific activity that we've been engaged in. It also reflects our client relationships that you benefit from as we work together, as we have partnered together for many transit clients to achieve success for them, including Hart. Next. What you see here is the list of our relationships, and others focused on, yes, I also have relationships at DOT and FTA. I work very closely with FTA and have done so for over twenty-five years, working on clients who are trying to secure funding to the capital investment grants program, as well as the other programs within the agency. Now, I have very deep relationships with the Chief of Staff, Matt Welvis, Head of Planning, Latisha James, and also the head of the New Starts Program, Robin Singfield, as the region is looking to advance several projects through that program over the next several years. And so those relationships will become invaluable to Hart as you begin to move those projects forward. Now, let me turn it over to Governor Martinez.
Thank you. First of all, let me say it's a pleasure to be, to be addressing you and the chair. You did a marvelous job here, and you brought back a lot of memories. Uh, a long time ago, when I was Mayor of Tampa, transit was part of the city of Tampa government, and I had the pleasure of pulling you first board and also putting on the ballot that half mils, uh, tax that you were talking about, and this goes back a very long way. For the last thirteen years, I've been a colleague of Jim Davis at Holland and Knight, a great firm that's got deep roots in the state of Florida, deep roots in the city of Tampa. Uh, the team that we've got is really a strike team in terms of being able to act quickly, stay on, stay on, on the, on the issue, be certain that we are able to communicate it not only to the legislative branch of government, but when you seek something through the legislature, you have to be sure that the executive branch of government is going to be supportive, or at least not in opposition. And I think our ability to deal with the executive branch of government, to deal with the Florida Department of Transportation, to deal with District Seven that's based here in Tampa is key to succeeding, particularly in the upcoming year, where there's going to be a lot of stress in state government in terms of its revenue and what it is it's going to do. So I think the experience that we have at the federal level, at the state level, the people that we know, the advocacy that we have done, I think will be grateful for, for Hart. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity.
Next slide.
That was your one-minute warning.
So, real quickly, um, just wanted to follow up on our last slides on the advocacy strategy for Hart. We have already kind of started to talk about Hart's priorities for 2021. What would that look like? Get ready for if there's administration change, or if we have a second term, uh, President Trump. Um, just real quickly to wrap this up, our success and our subject matter expertise is like, I feel, no, is the best out of all the teams presenting today. We know this stuff. We, um, have the right relationships. In fact, as you probably saw on the news over this past weekend, the city of Tampa is being awarded a twenty-four million dollar build grant for West River, and we were part of that advocacy team that helped the city get this project done in the very first round that they submitted it to the Department of Transportation. Um, so we are trusted by a dozen transit agencies and state leadership authorities nationwide. It's not about advocacy, but because we provide quality services for our clients. And we'd be honored to represent Hart at the state and federal level moving forward again. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation. Um, at this time, we would, um, ask if we have any board member comments or questions for the Holland and Knight team. And seeing none, I will thank you, and, um, uh, we will move on to the next and final team. Um, Mr. Edmondson, you're recognized to introduce the third team.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Batting cleanup tonight is going to be, um, representatives from Potomac Partners and City Consulting. Uh, once again, I'm going to remind, uh, speakers to introduce yourself before you begin speaking, so we can record your name for the public record, and for those not speaking, to keep your devices on mute, um, so that we can afford feedback, or, excuse me, can avoid feedback. Um, I do believe Mr., um, and I'm going to mispronounce your name, Rick, so I apologize, Mr. Rick Alcalde, uh, is going to be, uh, the primary presenter, uh, but we will go ahead and open the floor to the representatives from Potomac Partners. Thank you.
Well done on the pronunciation. Thank you. Uh, I'm Rick Alcalde. I'm sitting here in our Washington office. To my right, I have my senior partner, Dan Felice, and behind me, I have Adam Cross. Uh, we are, um, the team that will work DC for you, uh, uh, as we propose it. I want to start off by thanking you very much. The evaluation committee gave us a wonderful score and recognized, uh, uh, the abilities of our, our joint venture with, uh, the very esteemed firm, um, in Tallahassee. Uh, we, we are very pleased to be working with Capital City Consulting. Uh, I have worked with Justin Day in the past, uh, in relationship to, uh, our Tampa airport client, and, and Jim Boxwell back, back in the day when he was up in DC working for Porter Doss. Um, so it's a, a joint venture we're very pleased about. Uh, Potomac Partners in Washington DC is a boutique transportation and municipal funding, uh, expertise firm. Uh, I founded the firm fifteen years ago after having been with large and medium-sized firms, recognizing that you need to have, uh, a requisite amount of time and attention that you spend on, uh, a limited client base. And by the way, uh, for the record, we're not going to follow the slides, so, uh, we won't be asking for change. Um, but our, our, uh, my structure of the firm is meant so that we can give very tailored, um, strategy and, and policy responses for our limited client base that we will always, uh, be available twenty-four seven. Uh, the three people you're looking at right now as we speak from Washington are the three people that will be working under contract all the time and are, and available to you all the time. Um, so, uh, again, time and attention. We don't oversubscribe in a, in a, uh, funding sector. We do not have, uh, too many transit clients because you keep going to the same pools of funding for each client. Our clients know us as the, uh, for the, the folks that we represent, and they're not asking us, which one of your clients are you here to see us about today? Um, we know Tampa Bay. I was born in Tampa, um, and, uh, I own a home in Tampa Bay, which I spent a lot of time in. Uh, not enough, unfortunately, but, um, I moved to Washington where, when, uh, when I was a young boy, when my dad took a job as Sam Givens as Chief of Staff. Um, we currently represent Tampa International Airport and are pleased to say that in our first year representing them, we secured the funding for their, um, EDS system, their explosive detection system, which their previous large Washington law firm, in six years of representing the airport, never secured a dime for them. We got the full agreement from the Department of Homeland Security for more than ninety million dollars. Um, in a previous firm that I worked at that was founded by my father, uh, I led the city of Tampa and Hillsborough County lobbying team where, uh, I was, you know, involved in securing some of the original funding for Mayor Greco under the, for the streetcar project, the, uh, the E-Board Streetcar. Um, our methods to, uh, for our success for our clients are that we sit down with each client. We'll sit down with your senior people, your senior board, and understand fully what your needs are. We'll overlay those on what the current dynamics are, funding and policy-wise in, in Washington, and we'll build a strategy together. We then take that strategy to not only your delegation, but to the senior policymakers that make up and write the laws. And then we, uh, then we seek to build important relationships for you. I have personally brought two former chairmen of the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, uh, Don Young and Bill Schuster of Tampa, to meet with clients, uh, that I represent in Tampa. Um, a few, a few successes, as I mentioned, are the Tampa Airport, which we're very proud of. Uh, Orange County Transportation Authority is one of our clients. In the sixth biggest county in America, in California, we secured two major projects for them. One was a six hundred twenty fi- uh, twenty-nine million dollar TFI, um, loan, which saves the county taxpayers three hundred million dollars for a project that cost one point nine billion. Uh, we also got the first, um, FFGA for the, uh, uh, OC Streetcar under the Trump administration and have worked closely with heads of FTA and the secretary there. So, um, I will now turn it over to the friends at, uh, Capital City Consulting to finish off.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Madam Chair and Directors. Uh, my name is Justin, and I'm the managing partner of Capital City Consulting. Um, on behalf of the firm, we're excited about the possibility of working with you to expand Hart's priorities. Uh, we very much want to be a part of the regional solution to Hillsborough Transportation. I've been at Capital City Consulting for three years now. Prior to that, I was the Secretary of the Department of Transportation. Justin Day, also at Capital City, who will speak next, manages our camp office. Uh, the two owners of Capital City, Rama Page and Nick Iaroski, have planned to join us this evening, uh, but unfortunately, they're at a meeting with House Speaker Chris Plow. Uh, if we're awarded this contract...
I'm going to ask you to speak up just a little bit.
Okay. I apologize. If we're awarded this contract, Justin and I would be the two working with Hart on a daily basis, so we wanted to be the ones to speak with you. Um, I do want to tell you a little bit about Capital City Consulting. The firm was founded in two thousand and three. We're consistently rated among the top three lobbying firms in the state, and our approach is simple. We hire subject matter experts, people with years of experience and deep relationships that we can immediately put to use for our clients. And so we believe that advocating for Hart will require three things. First, a regional understanding of Tampa's transportation needs, the right relationships, and a team approach. Um, as Hart has made clear, Tampa's transportation needs have to be approached from a regional perspective. During my time at DOT, I spent a lot of time on Tampa issues, whether it was airport and court funding, emphasizing the importance of transit, um, the Howard Franklin Bridge, or getting TV Max right. Um, spent an awful lot of time understanding Tampa's needs. In addition, Justin Day lives and works in Tampa Bay and has a ground understanding of the state. Um, the right relationships will be key in advancing Hart's priorities. Obviously, the focus... Obviously, the focus is on Heart's federal partners, the Governor's Office, legislature, and DOT. Um, Rick from Potomac Partners laid out our approach on the federal side. In terms of the state, our firm was actively involved in the Governor's campaign, and several members of the firm, including myself, served on the Governor's transition. Uh, with 13 members in our firm, we have a relationship with every legislator, and Justin knows the Hillsborough delegation that is now. Um, and the final element in our approach to helping Heart is a team approach. I think Heart was very smart in how it approached its government services contacts by having the federal and state lobbyists in its joint proposals. Um, it's true on transportation generally, but transit in particular. Um, in order for these projects to get funded in the forward, you've got to have your state and federal partners onboard and actively involved. And so, one issue with one of those partners can really throw an entire project in jeopardy. So, by having these services bundled together, you've got a team approach from day one. We know, trust, and work with our federal team at Potomac Partners every day, and our work on behalf of Heart was the team one. So, once again, thank you for considering our team. We believe we're the best positioned to support Heart accomplishing its goal. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Justin Day, who manages our Tampa office.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Jim, and, uh, Madam Chair. I hope you can hear me. Um, I know we have about a minute left here, so, uh, my name is Justin Day. I am a partner with Capital City Consulting, and as Jim said, I manage the Tampa office for the firm. Uh, as a Tampa resident, obviously very excited at the possibility to represent Heart again. Uh, I think there's a lot of opportunity for this agency, and certainly, I think we all look forward to playing a role in supporting the riders, staff, and board of Heart.
Mr. Day, we've lost you. Um, I'm going to give you the same advice I gave earlier, and that is if you turn off your video. Since you're having a, a hard time coming through, we might be able to hear you. Mr. Day, we're not hearing anything.
Something with our group-
There you go. If, if you, yes, you've got, uh-
All right, I am sorry. I'm in a hotel room in Tallahassee right now, so internet connection is intermittent.
Yes, so if you leave your video off and just speak, we'll, we'll give you one minute left.
All right, perfect. So, just something, I'm sorry, I lost you, but, uh, something that our group can bring in addition to the federal and, uh, state piece is the local representation in the Tampa Bay region. Obviously, being based in Tampa allows me to be available for in-person meetings with the board and staff, and also, uh, attend board meetings and committee meetings once we get back to being able to perform those in person. Um, I also believe it's important that Heart is communicating with Hillsborough County, the city of Tampa, Plant City, City of Tampa Terrace, as well as at DOT District 7, and we have relationships at all levels that could be, uh, of help and of service to Heart. Um, lastly, I just want to thank the staff and the board for the time that you all have dedicated to this process. As the board has reviewed the committee packet, um, I think it's important to point out that our group did score the highest in the technical review portion of the RFP. And it would also appear that we were the least expensive of the three firms that you are interviewing tonight. And so, we hope that after reviewing all of the information before you, that the board would, uh, support moving forward with Potomac Partners and Capital City Consulting, who are legislative affairs consultants. So, with that, I think I just beeped the timer, and we are happy to take any questions. Thank you.
That's right. That's, uh, perfect on time, and I apologize for the technical difficulties and, um, uh, thank all the presenters for, um, your patience with our virtual system, um, and, and, uh, working with us on that. Do we have any comments by the board members? I'm seeing no hands for this specific, any comments or questions for this specific presenter. Um, so, thanks again to all the presenters, um, for, for bringing us such, um, great presentations tonight. And, um, Mr. Edmondson, you're recognized to walk us through the next steps of our action item tonight.
Uh, well, Madam Chair, I'm actually going to help, ask for help from our, um, our Chief of Policy and Performance, Lena, um, for how best to move forward. This is my first time doing this particular type of contract with the board, so my understanding of the process is that, uh, board members were, um, supposed to basically discuss, uh, which of the presentations they felt best represented Heart's vision of the future, or, I mean, it's kind of paraphrasing there, but, um, their, their, the result of the board member discussion was to instruct, uh, procurement staff which of those three firms they felt, um, they, they wanted to pursue contract opportunity with. And then I would present a resolution, um, uh, asking for authorization for the chief, interim chief executive officer to enter into negotiations and to make the contract award to, um, that selected firm. Um, so I think at that point, again, I, I kind of need to defer to Lena, as she's been through this a couple times, um, for her guidance. Um, and then, um, I will await discussion in, in verdict, for lack of a better term.
Great. Um, Lena, I think we can take it from here. Do you have anything else to, to add that would help us?
No, Chair, Smith, uh, the process that, um, John outlined is correct.
Right, so, if we, um, I'll open the board, the floor now for, uh, board discussion and, and, uh, comments. Uh, Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I want to thank all three of the, uh, uh, firms, Beckwith Pollockoff, Heart, Holland and Knight, and, uh, Potomac Partners and City Consulting for, for coming forth tonight and giving us your best shot as to what you can do for Heart, uh, in this situation. You, you've, uh, you all know that Heart is a willfully funded, uh, agency that does, uh, marvelous things, uh, with the budgets that we have. And the, the firm that we're looking at, the firms that we're looking at tonight, uh, must, must put Heart as, uh, on the top shelf when it comes to transit and trying to get the funding or any other legislation or anything that's out there, uh, whether it's, uh, uh, and, and your budgets across Tallahassee or in Washington DC, Washington DC to help this agency. Um, so, thank you all. I've had the opportunity for my 20 some odd years, 25 years and 56 days elected official to work with many of the people of both of these agencies, from Beckwith Pollockoff, Beckwith Pollockoff, Holland and Knight, and, uh, Potomac Partners and City Consulting. Um, some of us go back a long way, um, my 25 years of being elected official. Uh, and I know that, that both, all of these firms would probably do an excellent job. I don't say probably, would do an excellent job for Heart. This is a tough decision to make tonight, uh, but we've got to, we've got to make a decision tonight as to who are we going to utilize. Um, I like the presentations from everyone. Um, I do have a concern that two of the firms did not have anyone of color, uh, that came forth. Uh, that's a concern that I have. This day and time, with the number of minorities, specifically people of color, that are going to our legislatures and going to Congress, uh, not to have anyone in your firms bothers me. You know, I must put that on the table. Uh, and, and hopefully, that can be corrected, uh, in the very, the future. I would like to see, uh, if that, if that, that come forth. Uh, Madam Chair, I don't know if you're ready for a motion now? You want to hear from other members? Uh, it's up to you. I'm ready for a motion if you want me to make one.
I have, uh, three other, um, board members in the queue, but if you're ready to make the motion, we can, uh, put that on the table or you can wait for generally-
No, I'll, I'll make the motion now. Um, and again, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your presentation. I think that you, you could do an admirable job, but, um, I learned a long time ago, if it's not broke, don't try to fix it. Um, so, as nothing is broke, I'm not going to try to fix it. But I do believe that I need, we need to see some people of color in, in your, in your firm out there doing what they need to do. So, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we hire Holland and Knight as our lobbying firm.
I'll second it.
Uh, uh, thank you. Who would that second?
Marvin Knight, Director Knight.
Thank you, Director Knight. So, a motion by, um, the Director, uh, a second by Director Knight to, um, approve a contract with Holland and Knight. And, uh, with that, let's see, we'll go through board discussion. Uh, Mr. Hudson, you have tonight.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I had two questions. I think we're done. The, the first question is, what we can do in the future, I mean, to avoid having lobbying contracts come up two months before November?
Uh, well, uh, the, the short answer, Mr. Hudson, is that, um, we can, um, alter the term of this particular contract such that it would expire perhaps at the end of a calendar year versus the end of a fiscal year.
Okay. And then my second question is, what, um, I guess the reasoning was between going with the teaming approach, the, the joint venture, you know, single contract, and what the participants sort of joint venture themselves together as opposed to separating the scope of services into a federal contract and a state contract?
The solicitation actually contained two work scopes, one for federal and one for state, and we allowed all interested vendors to decide and determine whether they wanted to bid on one piece of that work or both pieces of that work. And these, these three firms each elected to bid on both pieces of work. In fact, we had nine responses. Eight of the nine responses elected to bid on both pieces of work concurrently.
Okay, so eight of the respondent groups sort of put, put them teamed up together to, to reply to this RFP.
Uh, well, no, I, I don't want to, I don't want to misstate. It wasn't that, that eight, um, eight respondents contained, uh, prime contractors and subcontractors, one for federal, one for state. It was that we, we actually allowed in the solicitation for interested vendors to select if they wanted to bid on just a federal piece of work or just a state piece of work or both. And each of the, not each, excuse me, eight of the nine responding vendors put in proposal to, to, um, take on both the federal tasks and the state tasks. And how they did that, whether it was in-house with a single consulting firm, just their own principal firm and their own principal staff, or whether it was to partner with, um, subcontracting firms that had expertise and, and, and network connections in, in either the state or the federal side, we left that entirely up to them.
Thanks.
All right, we, I want to remind the board members, we have a motion on the floor and a second, so we will try to focus our discussion on that motion, um, and, uh, take a vote on it, and then open for, you know, depending if that pass or fails, we could take further discussion. Um, Mayor Castor, do you have anything to the motion?
Uh, no, if you just want to vote, I was just going to make a comment. I can wait until after the vote. That should, that should-
If it's pertinent to the decision about whether to take this firm or some other firm, it would be relevant.
Well, first of all, the Evaluation Committee, they were, uh, bringing forth these three, um, uh, five, uh, four, uh, schools from, uh, uh, different rooms, and, uh, I, I certainly don't have, uh, Commissioner Miller's, uh, experience as an elected official, but I have worked with, uh, Senator Sanders, uh, Senator Fernandez, and Justin Day. And, uh, I thank them very much. I'm sure that any of these groups could, uh, handle the tasks and handle them well. But I too, the experience that I had with Holland and Knight, uh, has nothing to object to, and that I'm, I'm sure usually going to learn again to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Compliments, sir. You're recognized.
Can you hear me okay? I have switched computers. Okay, um, I just wanted to, uh, uh, thank the, uh, Solicitation Committee, did a good job, as well as all the presenters. It was very interesting. It's my first time doing this, but I, I have to echo, uh, Commissioner Miller's comments. If it's not broken, there's nothing to fix. And, uh, I, I do kind of like the experience that they bring to the table. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. Um, I, I, I know, I'm, I'm a little concerned with a joint venture. It's hard to get control, and it's got to be one, one head to everybody doing everything. So, I just wanted to, to basically go on record saying I'm full support of the Holland and Knight option. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Oberman, you're recognized.
Sorry, I keep forgetting to, to put my head back on. Um, I, I just want to say, as the, as the one board member that, that worked on the, on the RFP, um, I am hugely impressed with all three of our candidates. We, uh, it was a very, very difficult, uh, decision just to get down to the three. We had amazing, uh, proposals come forth, and in the top three, you definitely have tough choices to, to pick among. Um, I think one of the things that I, I learned in this process, and one of the things that I was looking for in the process, was a strong local relationship that actually assisted us as board members, uh, to be allies in the fight for resources and, and agenda items that Heart has on its plate. Um, and that, that is critically important to the decision that we make today. Um, having someone or having a team that can really help, uh, elevate the advocacy of our board members to help us, help them bring, uh, the resources that we need to be successful as a transit agency is cri, is critically important. And so, I, I want to thank all three of our proposers, uh, those that have proposed services. Um, and it's my understanding that we would be voting to ask staff to negotiate, uh, with the selected, um, candidate, um, to work out a proposal for the services as well as the fees negotiated. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, like it says in your, um, uh, packet, it's a, um, authorization for the ICEO to enter into negotiations and award a two-year contract with two one-year options for state and federal legislative consulting services. The motion on the floor is to, um, do that with Holland and Knight.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
If anyone wanted to amend that, uh, in, in a way such as suggested by, uh, Director Hudson or any other way, that would need to be done before we take the motion.
If I'm still on the floor, I would like to, to amend the motion to suggest that we, uh, assure that the contract allows for six months prior to the legislative session. So, I would move it up to June? Would that be?
To, I'm sorry, to add time to the two-year contract or to take time from the two-year contract?
Uh, I'm, I'm, either way, it would be beneficial to have, have it six months before session, uh, so that the board is available as, as we go there. So, if we want to add six months to it in order to gain consistency, uh, I'm willing to amend the motion to, as it stands, to recommend Holland and Knight, but to, um, make sure that the, uh, new, if, if renewal, we're at least six months ahead of the legislative calendar.
Mr. Edmondson, do you have, uh, uh, some advice for us about, um, extending the contract six months or so that it, so that it ends in June? Either extending it longer or making it shorter?
Yes, ma'am. Um, our, our current contract term for this initiative is two-year base term with two one-year options. What we would do then is, uh, stretch that base term out to, um, two years and however many months to get us to, um, a June expiration. Um, and then at that point, a full contract year worth of options would kick in, and then the next time, the full contract term would come up for renewal. It would be in the June timeframe.
Thank you. Do we have a second to the amendment proposed?
Second.
That second is from?
McCannick.
Uh, Director McCannick, thank you. So, we've got a, an amendment proposed by Commissioner Oberman, seconded by, uh, Director McCannick. Um, so now we're discussing the amendment, um, and then we'll dispose of that and come back to the motion. Um, Director Vera, Councilman Vera, do you have anything about the amendment you'd like to say?
No, Madam Chair. I was going to speak on Commissioner Miller's underlying motion, if I may, or if I can hold my remarks until later, if you'd like.
I'll come back to you. Director Williams, to the amendment?
No, I, I'm, I took my hand down. At this time, my feedback has already been provided from a number of my, my fellow board members.
Thank you. Uh, Director Kemp, uh, Kemp, Commissioner Kemp, do you have anything to the amendment?
Yes, I'd just like to ask, I, I thought they were points well taken by Director Hudson. Thank you for- thank you for raising those. Was that for Director Hudson, was that the kind of timeline that you had in mind when you stated this, just as regards to the timing of this? Because I do think this was very awkward timing.
Yeah, this is sort of like Russian nesting dolls now emotions. I mean, I think three months would be plenty. I mean, I think I would, you know, the lawyer in me would say, I think that we should have an option to extend the two-year base contract for a period of three months to get through a potential successive election cycle. I think it should be up to us if we want to exercise that. But, and this is a criticism of staff, I mean, I understand how the fiscal fall bounces, but we should not be entering into contracts with the government on a fiscal timetable, it should be on the electoral timetable. So I think three months, I think six months is more than plenty, but just not end of September.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. I just want a clarification on that, because I think, you know, I wasn't quite sure, and I wouldn't bring up the timing, but I did think, I have thought the timing was awkward. I'll speak to the main motion afterwards.
All right, so is there anyone who'd like to speak to the amendment? Seeing none, we're going to take a roll call vote just on the amendment to extend the contract to June. Staff, take a roll call vote on the amendment.
Good evening, this is Danielle, please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
No.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight? Director McLean?
Yes.
Director McCannick?
Yes.
Director Knight? Thank you.
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Oberman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Vera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes 12 to 1. Do you want me to name the name?
I think we've got it. So, all right, so that was the amendment to extend the contract, and now we're back on the original motion to offer that contract to Holland and Knight. So we had a couple of speakers left in the queue. Councilman Vera?
Thank you, Chair. Just extremely briefly, I wanted to thank everybody who put forth their proposal tonight. I've been an attorney for almost 17 years in civil defense work, so I've been in your shoes, and it's always interesting. I'll be diplomatic, it's always interesting. I see a lot of good people, Justin Day, Caesar Hernandez, who I think the world of, and many, many other people there. So I've certainly been there. I would agree with my colleagues who have spoken, including the maker of the motion, Commissioner Miller, I don't see a need right now to make these sort of changes. I've never seen any substantial evidence that would go towards a change. I know there's a cost apparently in price, and I know that appears to have been a significant justify in the point difference there. You know, I don't see anything that would really change that. I would agree with Commissioner Miller with regards to diversity issues. I know that Holland and Knight, a fine firm of social consciousness, the firm of Bill McBride, certainly can work on that issue.
Councilman Vera, we've lost your audio again. Sorry, Councilman Vera, we've lost your audio. Might be better without the video. I'm sorry, Councilman Vera, we're not hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, now we hear you.
I'll just end my remarks, I think most of them got through, I think. But I'll end it where I ended it. Thank you, Madam Chair, darn technology. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. And that brings us back to Commissioner Kemp, to the main motion.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm very impressed by all the teams, like everyone. We have a spirit of riches tonight, I think, and the presentations were all very strong. I'm sorry on our committee that we didn't have any backup material to look at before the strategic planning committee. We see this, or very little, I should say. We had a, you know, demand estimate, and I'm glad that we have these full packets now that we could look at, and then the presentations as well. But I'd just like to say, yes, we have, you know, some great, I just want to thank everybody. We have some great presenters and people that have really well qualified to work with us, and again, recognize Justin Daries and Caesar Hernandez and all the teams, you know, many from Holland and Knight that are known. So I just want to thank everyone for making their application and coming forward.
Thank you. And Director McCannick, you're recognized to the main motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd really get to be brief, because I'm just echoing the comments. We've had excellent presentations from all of the three teams, and it's a difficult decision, but I think somebody said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think Holland and Knight has done an exemplary job, and I think we need to stick with that with that team in the future, so I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I hear, I see no more hands. Is there anyone else who wanted to say something about this action item before we go to a vote? All right, seeing none, staff, please call a roll to the motion on the floor, which is to approve Resolution 20200932, authorizing for the interim CEO to enter into negotiations to award a two-year contract with two one-year options for state and federal legislative consulting services to Holland and Knight. Oh, but I'm sorry, I said that wrong, because it's not a two-year contract anymore, it's extended to June. So, the staff, please take the roll.
Good evening, this is Danielle from Hart, please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director McCannick?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Oberman?
Director Oberman? Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Vera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Director Williams? Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Edmondson, and thanks to staff for all your work, and thanks for all three of our presenters tonight. As you have heard, it was a very, very tough decision, and we had, we appreciate your applications, and congratulations to Holland and Knight on the contract award, and the Hart team and the board look forward to working with you in the coming years. And that takes us to Item 6B, to approve the Independent Oversight Committee Proposed Service Planning Projects. And brings up Mr. Chris Kaufman, Director of Service Development, to introduce this item. Mr. Kaufman, welcome, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Good evening, board members. Tonight, I am going to introduce to you all the 2020 Independent Oversight Committee Proposal Service Planning Projects that will be submitted for calendar year 2021. At this point in time, we find ourselves in kind of a precarious position, and that it's very difficult for us to project exactly what is going to happen, obviously not knowing the future of our SOATs. So at this point in time, we are looking at the availability of funding regardless of whether or not we get the SOATs or not, to ensure that we are in, that we are meeting the requirements of the SOATs. So, the resolution, next slide, please. The resolution that we have before you is to authorize the interim chief executive officer to submit our program of projects to the IOC that will need to be submitted by the end of this month. So we have an opportunity to bring it to you at this board to discuss, and an opportunity to make any changes if necessary, and bring before you to the next board meeting if necessary. Next slide. Now, being that we're very unsure as to the future, we have not had the opportunity to spend any of our money at this point in time, we maintain the program of project strategy at this point in time that you all became familiarated last year, that is restoring services cut in prior years due to funding shortfalls, looking to continue those previously county-funded services that were assisting in reversing our trend of losing riders and really having a positive trajectory, and maximizing our service expansion and focus on a frequent grid. We're also looking to establish a planning program for short-term improvement and long-term growth and visioning for the future, ultimately looking to achieve our 30-year vision. Next slide, please. So again, this is an overview of the buckets of funding that we are required to spend our money within. Forty-five percent of that funding being in enhanced bus services, which include any kind of regular types of fixed route services that look at increasing services for more residents, land use, other kinds of additional funding sources. There's also the bucket of 35% that is to go towards essentially right-of-way, that includes at least 75% of the length of service, having an exclusive right-of-way within it. And then the 20%, a bucket that we are able to put, required to put 20% of remaining funding that is kind of flex spending for us to be able to spend across different types of projects, and we can add that into any one of these buckets above. What we did see total in here, last year's estimated totals that we were going to have at the end of 2020 was $253 million. With the 19 actibles and the 2020 estimates, we are only finding ourselves seeing a, and the included 2021 estimates, so for all three years, we're only seeing an additional $70 million on top of the 19 and 20 program of project estimates of funding. So what you see up there at the top, the $323 million total, is what we project to have total through the 19, 20, and 2021 program of projects, and that is, those numbers are reflected in each one of the buckets, split out the 45%, the 35, and the 20. Next slide, please. So, this next slide, we also had this up last year, the bullet points at the top would remain our primary focus if we were to get to funding in the beginning to restore the service, look at expanding our weekend and weekday frequency, making a significant amount of improvements on the core routes, and in this 45% enhancing of the bus services that were already approved by the board and the IOC committee. For the calendar year 2021, this is where it gets a little difficult for us to look at exactly how we are going to be able to plan out at this point in time. Being the limited amount of funding, and I'll talk a little bit more about how the funding was split up, we looked at only putting a service expansion amount of about $3.8 million of additional service for the calendar year 2021. And this was really limited by the amount of funding that we have available to add additional rolling stock into our fleet at this point in time. That's really our, at this point in time, that is our limiting resource in being able to put frequency on the street. Now, do keep in mind that the 2021 would be the third year of proposed projects, so anything that we would be able to do for that calendar year, based on what we see out of our final recommendations that come out of the, out of the short-term development plan that we have going on, the CRA, we would have an opportunity to adjust that funding by bringing a potential amendment before the IOC for approval, to you all as the board and IOC for approval in the future. Next slide. This slide here gives you a better understanding of how the estimated funding is broken out and where we were not able to meet our expectations in funding. Obviously, this year is, with COVID going on, is very difficult for any agency to admit their expectations. Sales are obviously down across the county, across the state for these opportunities. If you, next slide, please. If we look at this proposed project list, this is kind of a roll-up of all the projects within their respective categories. If you look at the bottom for the calendar year 2021, you can see that we had this proposed amount of funding within these specific buckets here, and we give you an opportunity to see the separate categories of which the projects, additional funding would be put in there. The Hart O&amp;M facility is probably the most significant amount of additional funding that we added money to, that being probably the number one top priority for the agency at this point in time, so that we would be able to expand our fleet, to be able to meet the needs of our future service planning expansion. We have added significant amount of additional planning funding in there for studies, including the CSX, potentially the Ferry, and other studies such as that. And then unallocated reserve is also a significant amount of money that we have added funding to. In the packet, what you should have is a much more detailed breakdown of the Hart program of projects that breaks out the project categories, and then by, essentially by department, and this will give you a much better idea of the differences, the percentage, not the, excuse me, not the percentage of change, but the actual change between 19 and 20, and then calendar years 19 through 21, that will outline how finance was able to project out the $70 million increase for these changes. And in there, you will see that essentially 85% of the changes are made up of, excuse me, 85% of the project spending for calendar year 2021. The additional funding would come from the operations and maintenance facility, rolling stock, and the reserves that we will be looking to fund for calendar year 21. But again, this is a dynamic program of projects, we do have the opportunity based on what we see occur with the expectations of success. We do have the opportunity based on what we see occur with the expectations of success in putting out the program of projects from 19 and 20 and being able to adjust these project priorities for calendar year 21. But we would not be able to do, we wouldn't be able to do that anyway for at least another year if we do get the SRTAX. We wouldn't be able to roll out the 19 and 20 changes for service planning for a year anyway because we would have to order buses to be able to do that. So that is, next slide, please. That is a high-level summary here of the IOC programs, project strategies that we have for calendar year 2021. Again, this is a challenging proposal to put forward at this time with so many uncertainties, but we feel confident that this keeps us on the right track and it gives us enough flexibility to be able to meet the needs of the organization if we do are able to successfully get the SRTAX funding here in the near future. And with that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I see some leftover hands, I think, of people who haven't maybe taken their hands down. Mayor Castor, did you want to comment on the IOC plan?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. And Councilman Diaz, your hand left over? Or do you want to comment?
My apologies, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right. Director Mechanic, did you want to comment on the IOC plan?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
No, thank you. I have that.
All right. So that takes us to Councilman Schisler.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm prepared to make a motion on it. However, before I do that, I do want to get on my broken record sounding concern with $8.4 million or $8.6 million worth of planning, that I still think that we've probably done this time and time again. However, I will, kudos to staff. It's a good presentation. The numbers do make sense except for the $8 million in planning. And I think it's going to go to the IOC and hopefully someday with some points to rotate. Based on that, I'd like to make a motion and authorize the interim CEO to forward it to the board.
All right. Council, we have a motion to approve with, by Councilman Schisler, seconded by Commissioners Kemp and Ockman. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'm sorry, I took my hand down once we had the motion and I'm just supporting it moving forward.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion to approve the request authorizing the interim CEO to submit calendar year 2021 program of projects to the All for Transportation SRTAX Independent Oversight Committee, otherwise known as the IOC, for review by September 30th. Ms. Arthur, please take your roll call back.
Thank you. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to item 6C, the employment agreement with our ICEO, David Smith, General Counsel, and we also have Cindy Townsend with Bell &amp; Roper will present the item. Mr. Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, good evening. I'll provide you a very brief historical background and then Cindy Townsend will walk you through the process. As you may remember, back on December 2nd at the board meeting, Chairman Miller, chairman at that time, indicated that on November 4th, Ms. Stewart had succeeded to the position of ICEO. However, there was not very much done with regard to reflecting the additional work that she was taking on. So he filed a motion, which I will read to you, move that Carolyn House Stewart receive a salary of $195,000 retroactive to November 4, 2019, which is the day she was appointed as interim chief executive officer, and continue to be compensated at that salary as long as she serves while continuing to perform her previous director of risk and legal services duties. And that was seconded by Mayor Castor and approved, I believe unanimously by the board. So that was the historical basis for that. Ms. Stewart has continued to serve in the director of, as a director of risk and legal services duties in the interim, and that was the historical fact. Now, after that, Ms. Stewart found out that in order for her to qualify for FRS, retirement benefits, which those of us who are getting close to the end of our long career certainly pay attention to, she needed to have a contract. And so there was a decision to provide a contract. It was moving through the process and I believe someone made the motion that it needed to go to committee, which it has, and now it's come back. We got Ms. Townsend involved because she's a labor and employment lawyer, and is much more versed in this arena than I. And basically, she negotiated a contract and it's presented to you, a request by Ms. Stewart as to what she thinks her contract ought to be. So with that historical background and brief introduction, I'll turn it over to Cindy Townsend to describe to you what the contract is and what's before you.
Good evening, Chair Smith. Good evening, board members. I believe that you have all seen a copy of the draft employment contract that I have worked on with Ms. Carolyn House Stewart. There are pretty much a few essential terms I know that are, were very important to Ms. Stewart while we were negotiating this contract. The first was the amount of her base compensation, which as Mr. Smith mentioned, she has been receiving a base salary of $195,000 retroactive to November 4th of last year. Ms. Stewart has asked that her base compensation be increased to $210,000, which is the amount of Mr. Limer's compensation when he was the CEO. The next important provision that she is requesting is that she has the option, once a new CEO is hired, that she can either return to her former position as the director of risk and legal services, or if she decides not to do that, then she be allowed to receive 20 weeks of severance payment at whatever the base salary rate is determined by the board. So for example, if the board determines to increase her base compensation to $210,000, then she would receive 20 weeks of severance payment at that rate. She has elected not to receive deferred compensation. That is something that some of the prior ICEOs have chosen to receive and others have not, and in this case, she has elected not to do that. Quite frankly, those are the three major terms that are here before you tonight to discuss. And if there are any questions that I can answer regarding those, I would be happy to do so.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from board members or comments about this item? Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me ask a question. With the contract, Ms. Townsend, was it 213, was it $213,000 retroactive back to a certain date?
No, the, yes, it would be retroactive to February of this year, February 2nd.
Okay. Let me make some comments, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. One of the things I should note, Chair, and I did not do this, and I'll take the blame for this, is that when we hired Ms. House Stewart as interim CEO, we still had Mr. Limer paying him as a CEO. So therefore, we could not have gone into a contract with Ms. Townsend at that particular point in time. When Mr. Limer was left, this board should have entered a contract with Ms. Stewart at that particular point in time. We did not enter to a contract. Every interim CEO, every CEO we had should have had a contract. We did not do that. And I'll take the blame for that because I was chair at that time and I should have been the one that had brought it forth, or had someone who was in my ear, hey, she's now interim CEO, he's gone, she should have had a contract. So therefore, with that being said, I think that this board should have a contract with Ms. House Stewart. She's done an admirable job at the position. I know she's been tough, there's no doubt about that, but she's got us through a pandemic. Through a pandemic that we did not lay anyone off. She negotiated contracts with the unions. We still have services going forth, went through some very tough times of some assaults on our drivers and just difficult situations, and she's brought this agency through that. I know that this board did not, in this rhythm, have her to stay on another year while we look for a CEO. But the fact of the matter is, is that we should have given her a contract at the point in time that Mr. Limer was terminated, he left. So I'm going to make a motion that we accept the contract that Ms. Townsend has given us with those points in there with the, specifically the $213,000, $213,000 retroactive back to, what you said, what was it, April? So April, Ms. Townsend?
I'm sorry, no, it's February 2nd of 2020 and it's $210,000, not $210,000.
Well, whatever the contract says, that's my motion.
Just for a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract as it is and authorize the chair to execute the employment agreement as it is presented tonight. Mr. Schisler, did you want to make any other comments besides seconding the motion? The motion is made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Councilman Schisler.
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I heartily agree with Commissioner Miller. Ms. Stewart has done a very, a very good job under very difficult circumstances. All, you know, people who are tough get complained against, I guess, but I think that she's done a good job. I've listened to some concerns and issues that people had with the contract, and quite honestly, I could never follow what their logic was. So I think that she's brought us through the pandemic, she's brought us through the trials and tribulations of the contract and everything that's associated with it. She's earned it, she deserves it, and we're better off her being in the position she's in. So I heartily endorse it.
Thank you. Director McLean, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for, I agree with Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Schisler. I believe Ms. House Stewart has done a fantastic job. My only question and one for clarification, if I can, with legal counsel, with our legal counsel would be. I thought we had an agreement already, or at least a verbal agreement on the dollar amount, and that dollar amount I thought was $195. And that's my only question I had was just clarification, whether that was a verbal, whether that was a signed agreement on the amount versus the 210.
In response, it's not a signed agreement because it was not in writing. What it was, from a legal perspective, is a contract. And someone offers a dollar amount to perform identified services, and that dollar amount and the services are accepted, that is a binding contract. It's an oral contract. And you can't have oral contracts with certain exceptions. By nearly those governed by the statute of frauds, which this is not. That having been said, it's not beyond the realm of possibility for someone to say, I did accept that amount, but I think that was probably a low amount, and I believe there should be a slightly higher amount, and that's essentially what you have here. And I'm not trying to get involved in the policymaking, but yes, you had a contract at $195. And I think that has been requested to be abbreviated and increased to 210, and it's been requested that you have the 20-week severance in lieu of taking her old position at whatever the compensation is at that time. So yes, you can stand, you can surrender your contract or stand on your contract, and that's not an ethical decision, but you're also free to respond more generously if you choose.
Okay. And thank you for that comment. So I thought we did have a contract, and based on the legal parameters there, we do have a contract for $195, is what I'm hearing. And now we're actually going back and renegotiating that set contract. Am I correct in understanding?
That would be a correct characterization legally, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I have similar questions. I do, I too thought we had a contract for $195, but then I understand that that's what Ms. House Stewart agreed to. I do recognize that we needed to put it in formal writing. And I did go through Ms. Townsend's comparative analysis of former ICEOs, interim CEOs and CEOs, and it was apparent to me that the board chose to raise Ms. House Stewart's compensation by $75,000 back in March, which is great, above what she had previously been making. And we had agreed to that and made it retroactive, which we agreed to. And the last two ICEOs were offered a contract of, were compensated at $163,000 and $180,000. And for the last 10 months, Mr. Stewart, in the last ICEO, both acted as the ICEO and the CFO from May of 2018 to 19, and didn't receive any additional compensation to perform the CFO duties. And he also didn't receive a severance package when he left. Other CEO agreements did not include a severance payment, our interim CEOs. However, Ms. Egan could return to her prior position, or she could stay on for another 20 weeks as an advisor. So there've been a variety of different terms that have been offered. The opportunity that Mr. Limer was offered was a total compensation of $241,000. If I'm reading this correctly, the two proposals we're asked to consider carries a total compensation of $270,000 or $290,000, given, given the severance, you know, opportunity and the timelines. Now, we just looked at a budget that is painful, really painful. And I am so impressed with Ms. House Stewart's ability to juggle as much as she's been able to juggle. But the realities of our purse strings are a little concerning. And while I do remember, and I did completely agree with the $195 that we offered and make it retroactive, I thought that was very fair and it should be, I'm a little concerned about setting a precedence, a severance that wasn't available before, even a prior capacity as the risk manager. I mean, there wasn't a contract there. So I'm a little concerned about going that, at that level. I'm not, I'm not sure, given where we are financially and fiscally, that we would be able to afford if Ms. Stewart did not compete, you know, in the CFO RFP that we're going to be doing, and she were to leave, we'd have a two-years' worth of CEO compensation on top of trying to find a CEO that we have to find the money to pay. So I, you know, this, and really this is no- So I, I, you know, this, and really this is no, I do mean no disrespect to, to Ms. House Stewart for the admirable work that she's done. But the realities of where are we going to find the resources to be able to pay two CEOs when we will have one at some point in time? Um, and I, I don't quite sure how to, how to go there. Um, so I, I would, um, I, I want to hear what, where this vote goes, but I, I would offer a, a different motion if, if, if this is, does not pass forward. Thank you.
Mayor Castor, you're recognized. You're muted? There you go.
Sorry, I hit the wrong button. No, I, um, I want to thank, uh, Commissioner McLean and Overman, who, as I said, um, maybe I had missed something. But, uh, I do agree with the seller service, uh, that Carolyn Housen has provided. She has done an incredible job in the, in the terrible circumstances. But, um, I just think that this contract would have very, uh, bad optic at a time like this. And I would, uh, I would vote to go with the original contract that we all agreed upon. And so I will wait to see how this vote, uh, all out, and then we'll probably second a motion made by, uh, Commissioner Overman, if she makes one. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, I also, um, thank everyone for their comments. Uh, I will also say that there's been seller service during a very difficult time, um, so that's not a reflection of that. But when we originally looked at this, uh, um, it was a hundred and ninety-five thousand, which was, um, our, uh, in a prior interim CEO, um, with many years of experience and, and work, was also, um, receiving, uh, I think as, um, I think it wa- it's a very good offer, um, and it was accepted verbally. I know that we've not had a contract, and it's important that we do have a contract in writing. Um, so it, I also think it would be excessive, um, to offer, the nature of an interim position is that there are not these, um, uh, compensation, um, packages, uh, if, if you, um, are not, uh, working after the position expires, if we hire somebody else. Um, I don't think we should be giving, um, that as part, part of this. I think that's, that's very excessive, and, um, I'd like to move forward. I guess if we have this, or, uh, if others are willing, um, I think we could amend this to have a contract, uh, for the one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in compensation. And, um, if further terms, and we, you know, could offer that and offer it retroactively, um, and have it signed, and then there could be further negotiations on, um, any other benefits, um, uh, you know, should that be desired. But I think it's important that we move forward with the contract tonight, and I think it should be the original, uh, verbal contract that we discussed initially. Was that an amendment, or, um? I could offer it out there, because we've, um, had several people discuss it. So I guess I will make a, uh, I'll make a, a amendment to the, uh, motion to offer a hundred and ninety-five thousand and, um, and make it be retro- retroactive and not include the, um, uh, other, um, benefits that, um, were suggested, strictly the, uh, salary retroactive.
Adam Harden, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a, a amendment to the motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Director Harden to, um, uh, offer the contract, but, uh, with the, uh, original salary and, um, without the added benefits of the, uh, twenty-week severance pay. Ms. Townsend, can you advise if we have enough of, uh, uh, description of this contract at this, with, with this amendment, if the amendment were to pass?
Um, I, I think so. What I would be able to do is go back and revise the contract, depending on what the board decides, and it's my understanding, what I'm hearing, that this amendment would mean that her base salary would be the one hundred and ninety-five thousand that she is currently receiving. And I do want to point out that it has been retroactive to November of twenty nineteen, so that's already in effect. Um, and then I, I believe what I'm also hearing is that I would delete the provision providing her, um, the option to, uh, receive twenty-week severance if she decided not to return to her position as the Director of Risk and Legal Services. Um, if, if my understanding is clear, those are definitely, uh, two easy revisions that I can make to the agreement.
All right, um, so, uh, Director Harden, you're recognized to the amendment.
I apologize, I, I'll take my hand out.
All right, Commissioner Miller, you're recognized to the amendment.
Thank you. So we're, do we get a clear understanding? We're just take, now taking an oral contract and making it a written contract? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, as I understand the motion from Ms. Kemp, you're taking the original agreement, making that the contract, but you are leaving open the prospect of negotiating severance pay and the provisions that are, that's probably the other primary provision.
That's not what I heard.
That's what I thought she said. Ms. Kemp, state what she said.
Yes, that accurately describes what I was requesting.
And, and what is that?
Exactly what he said about, um, uh, exactly as Mr. Smith just, and Ms. Townsend just described, um, the provisions.
Yeah, the current, the current contract would be one ninety-five rather than two ten. It would not include a severance pay, but under Ms. Kemp's motion, that is something that could be considered after this point. But I think the desire is to set a baseline, that was the baseline that was approved back in, I guess, December of, uh, two thousand nineteen. And what the board wants to do in that regard.
Well, I'm sorry, I did not hear that as part of the motion, uh, and I didn't even hear Ms. Thompson say that when she just explained that.
Now, Ms. Thompson said, "The contract that you're approving, if you approve it as amended, would contain one ninety-five, not two ten, period."
I understand that. Clear?
Of that, and no twenty-week severance. But I think Ms. Kemp is indicating she's open to considering severance on a go-forward basis, but not as a condition proceeding to the contract as it now is being voted on.
Well, uh, uh, if, I wish we had a clerk that read, that could read the motion back, because I don't think that what, because that is what Commissioner Kemp said.
That is exactly what I intended, and-
What you intended, that's not what she said.
Thank you for the clarification. Um-
Uh, I have a question. Okay, we are on, um, Commissioner Miller, are you finished with your comments?
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay. Uh, Director Williams, you're recognized.
Um, I just want to take the opportunity to, um, to say thank you. I recognize this is going on a very difficult time for Ms. House, House Stewart, and she's taken it, uh, the position and has done enormous work considering, you know, no one was looking at her, and of course, there are other things that we have to look at, and we will always investigate, but I believe she's made good prudent business decisions based on where we are and so forth. So I, I, I had the question in regards to, well, what did we initially agree to? So, um, as Commissioner Miller said just recently, what was his original, um, um, motion compared to Director Kemp's motion? And I just would like clarity on that one more time, please. And, um, I do want to say that I, I think we, that was a, um, we overlooked that that she deserved a contract and should have gotten one, um, than Mr. Limer left. Thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioner, um, Kemp, do you want to restate your motion one last time for clarity?
Well, actually, I think the clarification could come from our attorney in terms, because she was asking about process, what was originally, I mean, that's what I think the question, um, as I heard it, from Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams wanted to know what the original discussion was. The original discussion, and I have the motion before me that Lina Pettit, Pettit sent to me, that Chair Miller moved a motion that Carolyn Housen received a salary of one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars retroactive to November four, two thousand nineteen, which is the day she was appointed as interim chief executive officer, and continued to be compensated at that salary as long as she serves, while continuing to perform the previous director of risk and legal services. Director Castor seconded the motion, and essentially it was approved unanimously. That was the motion, and that was the, uh, action by this board on December second, two thousand nineteen, at a board meeting.
Thank you. Director Williams, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you. Um, the one item that I have, that I saw in the contract that I don't see now, or don't, I'm not hearing now, is, is the right to retain the option to, um, keep the risk management position. Uh, if we were to, um, you know, move forward with a, a, a full CEO, um, and in the contract was the option to return to the risk management position. Uh, is that part of your motion, or is that to be negotiated? Or is that going to be at the same compensation rate? I'm just, I'm curious, just, just to get some clarification.
If I can, I, I believe I can clarify. I believe Ms. Townsend indicated only that she would, the twenty-week severance would be stricken, not that the ability to re- return to her prior position. She would still have that option, it would not be at the old rate, it would be the new rate, which has been increased due to a compensation study that's been completed. I believe it's, do you agree, Cindy?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to get clarification on, um, uh, because, anyway, that answered my question, thank you.
All right, I see no further questions or comments from the board members. Uh, the way I have it, we're voting on first an amendment to, um, uh, the contract before us, to put it back as the way that's been explained, uh, already several times. And, um, if that passes, we would take up the original motion, which is to grant the contract the way it was amended. Is, am I correct, Mr. Smith, in the parliamentary procedure?
Unless you're how, that route was described, and essentially what I understand you're doing is you're, you're, you're voting on a motion to amend so that the contract will be approved at a hundred and ninety-five thousand. There will be no twenty-week severance, but there will be the right to resume her prior position at the compensation rate currently being approved in this budget.
I guess I'm asking, do we have to, like, approve the amendment to the contract and then take another vote to approve offering the contract? I believe that's what I'm-
Unless Mr. Miller will accept it as a friendly amendment.
There's no such thing as a friendly amendment.
Yes, no, I think we have to do it this way.
And you have to do it that way.
Okay, so, um, staff, please call the roll on the amendment to the contract.
Good evening, please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
No.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
No.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes eleven to two.
All right, so that was the amendment, and now we're back on the original motion to, um, uh, approve, uh, this resolution to authorize the Hart Board of Directors Chair to execute the employment agreement as amended with Hart interim CEO. Um, so staff, take a roll call vote.
Good evening, please say yes or no after your-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Are, are we not including the option for, to negotiate the twenty weeks?
If, if I might, Madam Chairman, I think the better process would have been to probably take up Mr. Miller's motion, and since the vote was clearly to defeat it, then you could have taken up an alternative motion to approve the contract at one ninety-five. We haven't taken that approach, and I do not have my Robert's Rules of Order in front of me right now, and as a person that gets up at five o'clock every morning, I'm not entirely sure I'm calling my, my order correctly. But, uh, I, ordinarily, what I see is you deal with the motion that's on the floor prior to the amendment. If you vote it down, which is clearly what the vote was, then you take up Ms. Kemp's motion to go to approval. So unless Mr. Miller wants to, uh, not object to that process, I think you should go back to that process.
So, um, uh, yes, this is why I was asking you if, um, if we could amend the motion.
Yeah, you're still voting on Mr. Miller's motion to approve the contract as is. And that's what you're voting on, and it, we can go back to the other motion after that.
No, Madam Chair, what I understand what just happened, I made a motion to accept the contract, the original contract that Ms. Ms. Townsend came out with, okay? Then there was an amendment made by Commissioner Overman, not Commissioner Kemp, that basically wiped out that motion material, the substance of the motion I just made. She made her motion, which was an amendment to the motion. That motion was adopted, amendment was made, was adopted. So what we have now is the original, is the motion that Commissioner Kemp made, that's the motion now. So there's no need to-
No need to vote that.
Yeah, what you're voting on is the motion. That was amended by Commissioner Kemp. So the, 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 the motion I made is gone. The number of two hundred and ten thousand, the twenty-week severance, and, and all that, that's gone because Commissioner Kemp made a motion, made an amendment to the motion that was adopted. So what you're voting on now is amended motion.
You can move on to the next order of business.
Well, no, I got something, my hand is up right now.
And Ms. Miller, like that-
You know, I, it's hard for me to understand, and I'm not a lawyer, uh, that we had an oral, a contract with Ms. Ms. House, and I must, like I said, I must admit that I thought I should have made a motion to come back to this board, had a written contract with House, once Mr. Limer was dismissed, or wherever he went. We did, we did not do that. And I, it's hard for me to understand how an oral con- an oral agreement is concerning a contract as the same as a written contract. I don't, I don't understand that, that Mr. Mr. Smith said that. But I, I, to me, that is not prudent, but to me, that is not legally binding, concerning an oral contract compared to a written contract. But that's what you said, that's what you, you're going along with that. I just, I'm very disappointed that we have basically, I don't want to, I, I started to say what I wanted to say, but I'm not going to do that. We have basically looked at a lady that's done a job that I don't think anyone else could have done, and doing two jobs, and kept us afloat in this time of a pandemic that we have, in the time of negotiating a contract with the union, a time of not laying off anyone, and basically saying, "Okay, we have an oral contract, that's what we're going to stick to." But there's no such, the written contract does, does not apply because you had an oral contract. I don't understand that, I don't agree with it, no one has a comment on it. I'll just cast my vote, and I just had to say that.
Let me clarify, because this is an important factor for me. My view of what my integrity is as a lawyer is to advise this board-
I didn't question your integrity.
Yeah, I'm not questioning yours either.
I didn't question your integrity.
I'm just clarifying a situation, may I?
Order.
Hey, I didn't question your integrity.
I'm not saying you did. I'm saying I want to clarify exactly what I said. I did, there's not a competing written contract. I said you have a, 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 a provision that could constitute an oral agreement at the time it was agreed upon by the board, but the board has plenary power. It's free to supersede that and alter that. I'm not saying you're bound by it, and you can't consider anything else. So I want to make sure you're clear on exactly what I was advising this board. I was simply advising that, yes, from a standard legal standpoint, an offer and acceptance, which is what you had, generally constitute a contract. But you can have an oral contract with certain exceptions. You've got multiple orders on the board. You've got Todd, you've got David Mechanic, you've got, you know, you've got Ms. Kemp. That's the law. I'm not saying you're stuck with it, because you, as a board, are free to take that different action if you want to. So I hope I was not unclear that you could do some- So I hope I was not unclear that you could do something differently than what you did December 2nd. But I was asked, what did you do on December 2nd? And that's what you did.
Thank you. Um, and we have a, I see a couple of hands up. Um, we have disposed of the motion, so, um, let me see.
You did not, you did not dispose, you did not dispose of the motion.
You, you passed an amendment to the motion, you still got to vote on the motion.
That's, that's what I'm, I'm thinking. We do need to pass the motion to, um, award the contract as amended. Uh, so, um, I, I think we're back there. If.
Don't confuse the issue, you're avoiding the contract as it was provided in the resolution, not as amended. The amended version was the one offered by Ms. Kemp. You are now going back and voting on Mr. Miller's motion, which was to approve the contract as provided at 210 with 20 week severance.
Now.
What you're saying, no, what you're saying, she amended it, now you're voting on it as amended, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Go, you voted on it as amended, that's what I said.
That's right.
Right. Okay, good. Um, so is there a board discussion on the, uh, on this motion? Commissioner Kemp, did you have any further discussion? Um, Director Mechanic, did you have anything to add?
Well, I, I, I guess, I thought Commissioner Miller said it correctly to begin with. The amendment to the motion negated the original motion, but I think under the circumstances we should have had and have the mo, to vote on the original motion and just so we avoid any debate further on this matter.
Well, let's, let's be clear because I believe what we're actually voting on is the amendment was approved, now you're voting on the motion as amended, meaning you're voting for what Ms. Kemp has suggested should apply rather than what Mr. Miller has said should apply. So you're not really separately voting on Mr. Miller's motion, it has been amended. He's correct. So now you're voting on the amended motion, which means if, if you agree to the next vote, you're voting for 195,000 dollars, no 20 week severance, and yes, you can vote on it.
Right.
Whatever the rate of pay is.
Yes.
Okay.
Staff, take a roll call vote on the contract, uh, as amended.
Good evening. This is Danielle from Hart. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
I'm not saying, I thought we already voted on this, but yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director Knight? Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller? Thank you. Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
No.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Vieira?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Knight? The motion passes 10 to 2.
Thank you. And, uh, that takes us to the interim CEO officer's report. Ms. Carolyn Hester, you are recognized.
Uh, Chair Smith, I apologize, we had one more action item with a presentation, Resolution 2020 dash oh nine dash 35, the arterial bus rapid transit study.
Yes. And I dare to apologize for my mistake. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, we are now on item 6D. Sorry, I got my pages mixed up. So, um, this is an action item dealing with the arterial bus rapid transit study. Uh, we had a thorough workshop on this BRT study a couple of weeks ago and the video of that meeting has been on YouTube ever since and the presentation has been in your backup, board members. So, um, hopefully anyone who missed this workshop has reviewed the presentation now and, uh, we can move through this item quickly. Um, Christopher Cochran, Director of Service Development and Justin Willetts, Senior Planner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for the record, Chris Cock, Christopher Cochran, Director of Service Development. Uh, and yes, we will, uh, move through this, uh, quickly for you all. Um, again, on, on, uh, August 26th, uh, we had a board workshop and a number of you, um, were able to attend in which we, um, were able to give you an update on the BRT project, um, that, um, we, as, as required by you all in, in the original contract agreement to, to bring forth to you, the, um, the results of our planning phase prior to moving into the, uh, next phase, uh, where you all were to make a decision on what we were, what we ought to do moving forward. Next slide, please. So real quick, the, the study approach here, um, again, was to, um, complete Phase 1, which, uh, at this point we, we are at, we've completed Task 1 through 3, um, between staff and the consultant and, uh, coming up with a recommended alternative, um, that we discussed in detail. Um, and, um, at this point in time, we've come to a decision point, um, in which we talked in, in great detail about how we would move forward in the Phase 2. We've come up with some alternative approaches to that, that we discussed at the, uh, board workshop and I'm going to hand it over to Justin Willetts, the Deputy, um, Project Manager, um, to discuss that, um, in a little more detail and, um, he will go over the action ask with you at the end. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Justin Willetts, Senior Planner, for the record. Uh, just a really quick overview of our technical efforts. Uh, we conducted our alternative analyses, defined it a recommend, defined a recommended alternative. Um, we've discussed station elements with you, uh, also cost estimates and identified some non-motorized transit supportive projects for our partner agencies to consider and we've collaborated with all the ongoing studies you're very familiar with throughout the area. Next slide. Um, we've had a lot of collaboration on this project with those projects, a technical committee, stakeholder committee, various public workshops, several of you attended, thanks again. Um, several stakeholder meetings, a board briefing in January 2020, next slide. And as Mr. Cochran referenced, a board workshop in August. Some of those topics we discussed at length were coordination with the existing routes and how we envision the existing, uh, service on Florida Avenue being modified, some of the other planned projects in the area. The collaboration with the TOD study, as it currently sits, the TOD study is really going to inform the altern, the optional, uh, stations that we have in the project along the corridor as it, as it stands. Uh, we detailed the schedule with some critical paths, talked about design and implementation and provided some additional information on outreach and committee meetings. Next slide, please. And our revised approach is shown here to advance Phase 2A, which is Task 5, the recommended alternative PD and E, and then come back to the board with a decision point once we have some finality to the, uh, AFT Surtax question and then decide whether to pursue a FTA funding or to implement a TSM alternative or a transportation system, um, maintenance alternative, kind of a, uh, BRT light, if you will, to kind of try to put this project together through a, another, a lot of other ways without a, a big capital injection to get us into the FTA project pipeline. Next slide. So the staff recommendation is to begin Phase 2A, advance some non-motorized projects, advance the transit supportive improvements, further refine the recommended arterial BRT project and then have a new Phase 2B, which we will come back to you with. Next slide. And the action for today is specifically to advance Phase 2A and approve a letter to FDOT endorsing the recommended alignment from the planning study and supporting the lane elimination as part of the Heights project south of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. This is important to get the technical work done, to feed into the design concepts being developed in the funded work program item that FDOT has already programmed for FY 2024, shown at the bottom of the map on your screen. And to also advance the traffic analysis and other technical work associated with the second segment north of MLK all the way to Waters, which is scheduled for design next year and construction in '25 and are consistent with both a federal process and an alternative TSM concept, um, which we discussed at length. So I will go ahead and move on to the next slide. And therefore the action is for Resolution Number R 2020 dash oh nine dash 35, authorization for the interim CEO to approve Tindell Oliver and Associates, Inc., DBA Tindell Oliver, to move forward with Task 5 as described in the final scope of the contract agreement and approval of submitting a letter to FDOT to endorse that lane elimination.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Are there any comments, Commissioner Overman, is your hand up for this?
Well, I'll just make the motion.
I'll second Schisler.
All right. Uh, we have a motion to approve, um, by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Councilman Schisler. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing none, this is a motion to approve the, uh, as, as said in your agenda packet, the authorization for the CEO to approve Tindell Oliver and Associates, given the final, the final scope of the contract agreement and, uh, approval of submitting a letter to FDOT. Motion made by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Councilman Schisler. Uh, let's take a roll call vote.
Thank you. This is Danielle from Hart. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp? Director Knight? Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Vieira?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And, uh, thanks for the, um, speedy presentation, uh, Mr. Cochran and Mr. Willetts. Um, now this brings us to, uh, our report from our ICEO, Ms. Carolyn Hester, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, board members. This is the 13th interim CEO report that is aligned with the areas of focus for the Hart Success Plan, customer experience, community value, employee success and financial performance. Hart continues to operate on a reduced modified service schedule that's a Sunday level and we continue to monitor our ridership, our fare box recovery and attendance of employees in response to COVID-19. As of February 11th, 51 employees have been confirmed positive, including 23 bus operators, five van operators and two streetcar motor persons. Thus far, we'll happy to report that 49 of our employees have been cleared by the healthcare providers and have returned to work. The eight employees who were hospitalized have all been released from the hospital and you see the chart that look, that shows our, um, incidence of COVID-19 in, in our, um, agency. Regarding ridership, a more detailed report is in, on page 608 in your packet. We continue to experience decrease in ridership compared to fiscal year 19 at a rate of 50%, 50.37%. Our numbers as reflected on these charts show that we have a decline of 59% on our fixed routes, 62% on para transit and 74% on streetcar. As of September 14th, our average daily ridership is 18,428 on our fixed route, 349 on our para, but we did see a slight increase in para and we may see a higher increase as schools are opened and students are utilizing our para transit, uh, for the mobility challenged students, but we're not seeing the numbers that we had expected to receive. Uh, as you saw, we only had a one day where we had over, uh, the 400 and our average is still 324 and our streetcar daily ridership is still, uh, 932. Regarding our proposed service modifications planned for January 2021 that the board approved for public outreach, Hart has engaged in public outreach since August, um, the 31st. We are conducting our virtual town hall meetings in both English and Spanish as well as service at our transit stops where we're receiving input for the public. Our public hearing is scheduled to take place in October on the proposed 2021 service modifications. Can you change the slides, please? Community, um, this is, this slide is on the, um, after virtual conference, which we had the fortunate experience of having some of our board members, Commissioner Overman, Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Schisler, uh, with, Director McLean, Director Williams and Director Knight had signed up to attend. Um, the ICEO also attended virtually as well as our Director of Transit, Chief of Transportation, Deputy Director of Transportation, Ruthie Burkhardt, and our Director of Streetcar Operations, Mr. Brian Allen. We're pleased, uh, that Mr. Colin Malloy, our Director of Safety and Security, participated on the panel. Um, regarding our bus shields, it was not only a protection against our operator assaults, but approved to be a protection also for COVID-19. It was a very interesting presentation and Mr. Malloy received plenty of comments regarding, uh, this presentation. There's a press conference on August the 12th with our representative Kathy Castor announcing the $2.7 million US Department of Transportation grant to bring electric powered buses to Hillsborough County with TECO as our funding partner. Uh, the participants in, in addition to Representative Castor included Commissioner Mary Ella Smith, Commissioner Kemp, the ICEO and Ms. Susan Blickman, the Florida, the Florida Director for the Southern Alliance for Clean, uh, Energy and we again thank our TECO partners for their support of this project. We did send correspondence to the entire congressional delegation, thanking them for their partnership, their leadership and their support of Hart. Good news, Hart received the grand award for APT's 2020 Ag Wheel Award competition in the category of best marketing and communications educational effort. That's our Ride With Respect campaign and you see Ms. Jones in the photo and she is our new ATU, um, president and we did send a letter of congratulations to her also. Our winners will be recognized on March 17th through, 14th through 21, um, 14th through 17th, 2020 in Anaheim, California. Community value, an update on our Hart AV project in partnership with FDOT, the vehicle, uh, manufactured by BEAT, is ready for its pilot service. Um, and it will be housed as the, it was at housed at our streetcar barn, but now it'll be housed under the interstate right off of Florida Avenue, uh, that's the branding rack and we did have a soft launch of the vehicle and you see the people from FDOT and some of the Hart people present in this photograph. Uh, staff provided an overview this morning, uh, to Chief Dugan and his top staff at TPD regarding this project and we will have, um, presentations at some of the roll calls regarding emergency and safety response to this, uh, vehicle and at a future date we will have our official press conference and launch the vehicle seat 10, but for COVID, only, uh, six people will be allowed in the vehicle. An update on the streetcar extension project, we are happy to report that the city of Tampa successfully submitted a request for evaluation and rating, uh, of our streetcar extension and modernization project to FTA under the Capital Investment and Small Starts Grant Program and they have acknowledged officially on August the 28th that it has been received and it will now go through the review process. We don't have a completion date for the review process, but we will continue to work with the city, um, on the governance documents and other documents associated with the project that we're truly excited about. The annual streetcar report was presented to, uh, six. The annual streetcar report was presented to six, they're listed here, the six agencies regarding the streetcar, regarding the streetcar. We do that every year at the request of the chairman. He has asked for HART's participation, and we did do that, and we thank Ms. Burkhardt and Ms. Cindy Stiglitz for also participating in this presentation for the historic streetcar. External communications, I continue to have briefings with Brad Miller from our sister agency, PSTA, to discuss ongoing initiatives, transit issues, and updates. We also had another telephone conference with TPD to discuss our Marion Street Transit Way and the MOU to receive additional documentation for the payments we continue to give, and also HART, HART's project with the Tampa Police Department for emergency use of some of our cameras at some of our transit stops. You can go to the next slide, please. HART hosted the Transit Safety Institute's Transit Rail Safety Conference and Safety Class here. Fifteen attendees were present, including HART's internal staff, as well as others from JTA, MOTHER, and Bi-State, which is St. Louis. We had two stellar presenters from California and, California and DC. And we're pleased to announce that the HART Road Supervisor, Shawn Matthews, was certified as a transit safety through this program, and this is a very good thing for HART. And receiving this certification requires not only attending this class, but several other classes. HART did receive a Transportation Safety Institute, and as part of our limited budget at HART, we did present them with pins to know that they did come. And this rail, this class included coursework on rail safety, rail safety, accident investigation, rail safety, security, and a lot of rail emergency management. We gave three tours at the 21st Avenue facilities to Board Member Melanie Williams on August 6, 2020, and you see her with some of our volunteers who were packing wipes for our drivers in individual packets. And the gentleman next to her is Keita Blake, who is the new Vice President of our union. We also had a visit from Mr. Marvin Knight to visit our operations facilities on August 26th, and we had our last visitor on September 11th, when we hosted Mr. Tyler Hudson. I'd like to also announce as part of our mission and vision, as we continue to make HART known in other venues, Mr. Chris Cochran presented a presentation on intelligent transportation systems to the World Congress Virtual Conference on, in September, early September. Regarding financial performance, I'd like to announce, and Cindy covered some of this last week, HART received our fiscal year 2018 refund for GNC fuel credits, a checking amount of $638,833.13. We remain committed to building a resilient future, and in building this resilient future, HART must accept the philosophy of Benjamin Franklin, that a plan is like, is like a ship without a compass that gets no place because it lacks direction. And so, the scorecard gives the agency self-direction for success, and it's really our mirror of what we're going to be doing for the next year. Next slide, please. This is in line with what we've done the previous three years with our success plan. The mission statement remains the same, the vision statement remains the same, and the key areas of focus remains the same, as Mr. Miller said, if it's not broken, some things you don't need to fix. Looking forward, as many other transit agencies across the country, we've proven to be central frontline service, and we continue to be a vital lifeline to this community. Our challenges are those as other agencies, you can read that in the interest of time. I'd just like to say that one of the things that we had to do is continue to define our metrics to communicate transit values and accessibility to the local community in the current environment. Next slide, please. In the development of the success plan, the internal staff went through the three steps here, defining success, building the work plan, and then managing the performance through our quarterly performance scorecard reporting. The four areas of alignment, as I said, customer experience, community value, employee success, and financial performance. Our tactical examples, we've added a few things, and that is the continued improvement of our transit and transfer stations, as well as the continued focus on safety and security. Our BRT study, our fleet modernization for GNC and electric buses, and the program of projects that you just saw that will be presented to the OIC. Under employee, under employee success, it's critical that HART establishes professional development, a professional development platform for our non-bargaining, as well as our bargaining staff, and the plan is to do these at least quarterly. We had one today that focused on human trafficking, operational safety, and quarterly training as required by FTA for internally. The proposed performance scorecard, if you look on page six, pages 619 through pages 629, that's the current scorecard, and it will have the metrics that we have achieved, and so the new scorecard will be the same with some changes in there, and you can see that. But this is what we need input from the board on moving forward. Its next step is to look at our scorecard currently and see if you need, we need to make any changes as we finalize the plan and come back to this board on September 28th to have you approve the final scorecard, so that on January 2021, at that board meeting, the quarterly results for the fourth quarter can be given to the board. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Stewart, I just have one question about that last item, the resolution that will come to us September 28th. Are you looking for board input between now and or yet?
Yes, yes. Any input that we can have from the board between now, and then we will, you can give me a call or give Lena a call, and then staff will discuss it, and we'll come back with you. That way, we will be on target to have it approved by October 1st for the new fiscal year, so that we can make a report in January 1st as part of the first quarter report, first quarterly report.
Thank you. And you can see by the breadth and depth of this report that is number 13, that you have given this board everything that is part of your work program every day on a daily basis, and that you have really been seeing us through this interim time, and it turned into a very challenging time with the COVID, and you've been keeping us, our drivers and our employees and our riders, safe all the while dealing with so many things. And this report, I think, is yet another illustration of what the board members were expressing in, in expressing their appreciation to you earlier. I see no questions or comments from the board members on the ICO report. For my report, I just have a quick update on the executive search for the permanent CEO, and it's good news. Our executive search is moving along right on schedule. The application period closed today, September 14th, and I was advised a little while back that at that time, they had received over 100 applications and expected a lot of applications to come in at the last minute, so that number is undoubtedly higher today. And the, the applications they've been receiving, they've, they've gotten many from very highly qualified candidates. So we have reason to feel optimistic that HART will be hiring a permanent CEO very soon. And at this point, since we are so close to finalizing the permanent CEO position, the interim CEO has agreed not to make any major changes at the upper management level, such as hiring, firing, or reorganizing until the permanent CEO is in place so that person can make those decisions at that time, which looks like it will be very soon. So that is, concludes my report and takes us to General Counsel's report. Mr. Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, good evening again. Essentially, what we have here is the HART process for amending its own policies requires that the amendment process be initiated by the board. That's under policy 320.01. We have three policies that staff wishes to have the board take the initiation on so that they can provide a written report to the two hearings that must be held in order to change the policies. Unlike the information you see previously, there's been an update. The first meeting will not be the board meeting on 9/28/20, which is your second budget meeting, since you have a lot to say grace over at that meeting. The first reading will be October 19th, 2020, at the appropriate committee. The second reading will be November 2, 2020, in front of the board. The three policies are outlined in the report. One is to initiate changes to the procurement manual as recommended by Carlton Fields. There was a workshop on this, there was some input from various members, and it is going to be formulated into a written form that you can then respond to more sufficiently, more coherently. The second staff initiated is a motion to change Section 430, which is substance, is the substance abuse program. These changes are primarily to conform with FTA standards pursuant to a recent FTA audit. So these are primarily tweaks to make sure we're not violating the Federal Transit Administration's requirements. And the last is the change on the travel policy that is being requested. These all need to be formulated, they need to be formulated in writing, so you have something that you can respond to. All they're asking you to do today is file a motion to initiate the process as required under 320.01.
Let me see. Thank you.
I'll make the question.
Second, Schisler, second.
Okay, we, thank you. We have a motion by Director Mechanic, seconded by Director Schisler, to initiate the process of amendment of the policies as described by our General Counsel, David Smith. Is there any discussion, questions, discussion? Seeing none, let's take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Danielle from HART. Please say yes or no after your name. It's called Director Castor.
Yes.
Director Harden.
Yes.
Director Hudson.
Yes.
Director Kemp.
Yes.
Director Knight. Director McLean.
Yes.
Director Mechanic.
Yes.
Director Miller.
Yes.
Director Oberman.
Yes.
Director Schisler.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Director Viera.
Yes.
Director Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you everyone for hanging in through all those action items tonight. We're just about to wrap up your, there's all these reports in Section 10 and 11 in your backup materials. You can find them there. And we come to any old business? And seeing none, is there any new business from board members tonight? And seeing none, we are, we're going to adjourn, but I first want to thank everybody for staying all this long. We've got, did a lot of good work tonight, and thanks to staff for helping us set this space in a virtual format and, and for all the presentations. We will see you back in a couple of weeks for the final hearing on the budget, and everybody enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.